I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could we have a sunshine announcement, please, Cam?
Yes, Chairman. Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, February 4th in the year 2025. This is a special Jersey City Planning Board meeting with a scheduled 5:30 PM start time. And in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting has been given to the editor of the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City Reporter, and posted with the city clerk on January 31st of 2025. This meeting was also posted on the Jersey City Division of City Planning webpage, and all distribution materials made available to the board were published and available to the public.
Okay, thank you. Could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Chairman. Commissioner Gangadin.
Here.
Councilwoman Prinzeri.
Here.
Commissioner Torres. Commissioner Dr. Desai.
You.
And Chairman Langston.
Here.
All right, we have five commissioners present. We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Could we swear in the staff, please, Mike?
I see the mats. I see Genro. I see Eric. Cameron, do you guys want any testimony to give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Do we have correspondence, Cam?
Yes, Chairman. We received correspondence with Stephen Joseph today regarding item...
Fourteen.
Fourteen on the agenda, and they have requested to carry to the next available meeting that the board finds suitable for them.
Okay. Obviously not the 11th, so...
So Chairman, my position regarding this application is we've carried this matter now multiple times, and the reason we've been carrying the matter is because the applicant is attempting to get some documentation that they need to get in order to move forward with their application. That being said, would be my recommendation to the board and to staff that this get put on for the late February meeting or early March meeting, so to preserve their notice, and then at that time, if everything is not in order and ready to proceed, then I think they're gonna have to renotice for a hearing date in the future. I think that that's the best way to proceed, Chairman.
Okay, Cam, I'm comfortable with March 11th.
Okay, so item fourteen on the agenda will be carried with preservation of notice to March 11th.
Okay, thank you.
And that concludes correspondence.
Okay, thank you, Cam. So let's get into old business. Item A is case P2024-0221 is a one-year extension for 352 Marin Boulevard. Good evening, counsel.
Good evening, commissioners and staff counsel. My name is James McCann from the law firm of Connell Foley in Jersey City. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, 352 Marin LLC. This is indeed an application for a one-year extension of an existing preliminary site plan approval that was previously granted to Block 11506 and 11509, Lot 1, 101, 201, and 3. It's in the Powerhouse Arts District redevelopment plan. I'll just note for the board that the applicant did apply for a two-year extension. After conversations with Mr. Ward from Planning Board Staff, we will find with a one-year extension if the board is willing to grant us that extension. As you know, this is the final phase of Provost Square, which is a very long, very complicated, and very detailed project of 1,000 units. There's a theater art-related space that's presently being dedicated to the city of Jersey City. We've been working very hard on that, hence the application for one more extension. For a one-year extension, sorry.
One-year extension, okay. Anybody, any questions? Okay, is there anybody here from the public that wants to comment? Anyone from public?
Chair, see no one from the public. I wish to close the public portion.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Matt, anything?
Yeah, staff prepared a memo. We dated it January 24th, 2025. In it, we recommend three conditions to go along with this extension. I just would ask if the... Mr. McCann has reviewed the memo and agreed to those conditions?
I've reviewed the memo dated January 24th, 2025, and on behalf of the applicant, I agree to all three of the conditions.
Yep, so staff views this fourth phase as a crucial component of this four-phase project. It's a mixed-use, mid-rise building comprised of 100% workforce housing, 32 units in total. Staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you. So undertake a motion.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P2024-0221 as presented to the board together with staff conditions, recommendation conditions.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval.
Acting Vice Chair Gangadin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Prinzeri.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
I'm sure we'll see you later. Okay, I'm gonna move one item up real quick. Item 10 under new business is case P2024-0179 for a minor subdivision at 32 Waverly Street. Good evening, counsel.
Thank you, Chairman. This is Eugene O'Connell appearing for the applicant, Waverly Street. This is a notice requirement, so I have the notices.
Thank you, counsel. Chairman, I received the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the application at 34 Waverly Street.
Thirty-two.
They say thirty-four?
You did.
Thirty-two, sorry. Does appear to be in order. Counsel, is it thirty-two or thirty-four?
It's... their two addresses, thirty-two and thirty-four.
Okay. So for purposes of the record, it is Block 5802, Lot 42?
That's correct.
Okay. So Chairman, the notice follows thirty-four as being the address on the tax list, which is why I said thirty-four. But apparently, it is thirty-two dash thirty-four Waverly Street. But it does appear to be in order. We're gonna mark it as A1 for the record.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
All right, thank you very much. So this is an application for a minor subdivision. We're relying on the filed map with the application. It is for 3234 Waverly Street, Lot 42, Block 5802. This is a vacant lot located on the north side of Waverly Street, between Baldwin Avenue and Palisade Avenue. The lot is 50 by 100, and we're going to create two lots, 25 by 100. We will remove the existing driveway that is on the block right now, and we will use a shared driveway for the new homes that are built.
Okay.
Shared curb cut.
Shared curb cut.
Shared curb cut, counsel.
Shared curb... yes, shared ten-foot driveway. We share it, share it for the two of us. There's an existing curb cut that we're gonna remove.
Put a curb cut in the middle of the two lots to be shared by both properties.
Share by both lots.
Okay, any questions, anyone?
No.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Is there anybody here from the public that wants to comment? Anyone from public?
Chair, see no one from the public. I would like to close the public portion.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Genro, anything?
I would just ask the applicant to agree to the conditions in the staff report.
Yes, we reviewed the memo. We agreed to the conditions.
Oh, we said staff recommend approval.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P2024-0179 as presented to the board together with staff recommendation and conditions.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second for approval.
Commissioner Dr. Desai. Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Councilwoman Prinzeri.
Aye.
Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, and thanks again for scheduling the special meeting. Appreciate it.
No worries, thank you. Okay, let's move back to item nine is case P2023-005... I'm sorry, 55 for a preliminary and final major site plan amendment with C variances.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record, Charles Harrington of Connell Foley, on behalf of the applicant. This is a notice case, so I want to provide these to counsel. Thank you, counsel. Chairman, I received the affidavit and notice proof of publication for 326 to 328 Johnston Avenue here in the city. It's Block 17505, Lots 10 and 11. Chairman, it does appear that the notice is in order. We're gonna mark it as A1 for purposes of the record.
Thank you, counsel.
Okay, thank you. So the application before you tonight is for preliminary and final major site plan, and we are requesting two deviations for the minimum setback from the fifth and sixth floor for corner lots and for deviation for... with regard to the feet and the number of stories, because we're asking for six stories, and we're asking for a C variance with regard to height. Now, a little history on the property in that what's before you tonight has been before this board in the past. My client is the owner of the property. He's also the designated redeveloper of the property by the JCRRA. There was a prior approval for five stories for this property. It's the corner of Pine Street and Johnston. There's a lot of development that's already been completed on that tax block, and this is probably one of the last new developments to go up. So we're coming back to request the deviations. It does take into consideration a bonus provision in the Morris Canal. So as part of this application, there's 30 units, but three will be affordable units. And we will... we've already have the checklist with the Division of Affordable Housing, and that will be an agreement that would be entered into with them with regard to the affordable housing. And we do have an existing redevelopment agreement in place with the JCRRA. So with that said, I have two witnesses tonight, our architect, Mr. Patel, and then Charles Height to address the requested deviations.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
Yes, I do. Avart Patel, A-A-V-A-R-T, P-A-T-E-L.
Mr. Patel, good evening. We've qualified you in the past. Is your license current tonight?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified. Okay, Mr. Patel, take it away.
All right. Can I quickly go through these... sorry, if you could for one second.
Cam, do we have... are we okay with Commissioner Lipsky on this application?
Twenty-eighty-seven, right?
No, no, we're not there yet. What that's not on tonight. Santo? We haven't taken expert testimony yet.
Yep, we're about to start, so...
Okay, so if we could, let's let the record show that Commissioner Lipsky is here and is able to vote on this application, just in time, Steve.
No testimony taken yet. We've just sworn the witness, and we are about to begin testimony on the application. Counsel, as always, as we go through any slides, I see that this is a seven-deck slide. I don't know if any of this is gonna need to be marked, but if it does, we'll mark it.
Why don't we mark it as A2 for the record, just in the event anything is different from what was submitted?
Okay, so A2 is the seven-deck slideshow presentation, and you'll submit all seven decks, all seven slides after the hearing.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Patel. Go ahead.
The site is located at the corner of Pine Street and Johnston. Site is 50 feet along Johnston and 95 feet along Pine Street, total about 4750 square feet. Gonna quickly move to the first floor plan. The main entry or the residential lobby is accessed through Johnston Street. There is a retail of about 1,000 square feet at the corner of the building, the front corner. And then building support spaces, sprinkler room, you know, trash room, along with the two staircases and elevator, as well as a small gymnasium supporting the residential units above. We are proposing two parking spots, one of them being accessible parking, and that would be dedicated for the retail use. Can I move to the second floor plan? The units are stacking from second to fourth level. Fifth level is different, so I'm gonna quickly go over the typical floor plans. Each level have seven units. They are one-bedroom, starting from about 450 square feet to about 600 square feet. And then there are three studios proposed. They are about 420 square feet to... 410 to about 460 square feet in total. The two staircases with the flank with the elevator in the middle and a trash chute is what the typical circulation corridor contains. And the units are stacking from, as I said, from second to the fourth level. Fifth level, there is a... there's a change in the middle of the building where there are three studios where... This level has a one-three-bedroom unit, which is required as part of the affordable program. And then one-bedroom units, and then the corner units towards the front and the back of the building would be duplex units. They are two-bedroom, two-bath, and ranging from about 950 square feet to about 1,180 square feet. Gonna quickly go to the sixth floor. Again, the corner units, as I said, they're duplex units, so that's continuing over here. And then the rest units are, again, one-bedroom, ranging from about 460 to 800 square feet. And then there is a rooftop amenity proposed. As both staircases come up, there's a small vestibule giving handicap access to the rooftop area. The roof deck itself is about 1,600 square feet, which would be occupied roof, and then the rest would be dedicated to the equipment and some of the green components as required as part of the development. Above the staircase and the elevator bulkhead, there is a roof... That would be a green roof as well, as required by the stormwater management standards. Gonna quickly move through the building elevations and their materials. This elevation is along the Johnston Street, which is the front of the building. Typical storefront at the bottom for the retail, as well as the residential lobby. There will be appropriate signage in conformance with the ordinance. And then overall, the upper stories have two materials, two material combination here. Part of the facade is a brick, and then the rest would be vertical siding system. Gonna quickly go to the elevation along the Pine Street, which is also a major elevation. That is also the longer front edge of the building. And as you can see, this is the storefront system as part of the corner retail space. And then the treatment on the upper stories is similar to the front facade, where we have a brick, vertical siding, and then some portion would be horizontal hardy panel-type siding. At the bottom, along the first floor, would be masonry split-face type of block. And the two side doors are access to the garage, as well as the utility spaces, the trash room and water meter sprinkler room. The other two sides are pretty straightforward. This is along the property line, which is... which would be covered with a hardy horizontal siding. And then this is the rear elevation, which is set back from the property line about five feet, and we are able to provide the windows for the units. And similar treatment here, the hardy siding will wrap around, and towards the front corner, it would be the vertical siding coming down to the second floor level. The first floor is parking, which is going up to the property line, so that side would not be visible. Basically, we are proposing four material combo, the split-face masonry block along the retail or the first level, commercial level, modular brick veneer, brown, reddish brown brick. Hardy panel would be on a lighter color as selected over here. And then the vertical siding would be, again, a lighter color, a little contrast to the hardy panel siding. I guess that's about it. I hope to answer any questions.
Okay, anybody, any questions?
How many bicycle racks you have?
So we are providing... the bicycle rack are located along the... in the garage, along the wall here. They are Walmart racks, and we are providing, I believe it's 15... Fifteen bikes indoors, and then there are four bikes provided on the sidewalk as part of the sidewalk improvement.
I got a quick question, just... I'm trying to understand. You have 30 units.
Yes.
And you're only allowing two parking spots?
Yes, the parking spots are for retail, retail use only, not for the residential use.
So how does the purse... that's just for the person that owns the retail spots?
Correct, that is correct.
Not for the customer, because the customer's not gonna know there's a parking spot around the corner inside the building, right?
Yes.
And what other purpose would that be, for taking out garbage, for taking out... Because it seems you're gonna give up a parking spot, a curb spot, which would be one car. We're gonna let you have a curb spot just to gain one car. That's a lot of stuff for just to have one extra car. I... so how would they move in? Would they be using that same facility, that big open space that I see there, the garage, to move in, to get deliveries or stuff like that, or no?
No, the deliveries would be done directly from the outside, but this is for the commercial space, you know? If that becomes a... I think we're pushing for someone from within the neighborhood would occupy, so they can have access to the handicap parking.
Okay.
Okay, so it's not dedicated only to the retail. It could be available for rent, sale, something?
I mean, right now, it's dedicated for retail, but if, let's say, if they don't use it and if the ownership is willing to give it to a residential unit, then that would be their discretion, but...
The owner of the retail space.
Development, yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else, any questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Patel.
Okay, then I'll proceed with Mr. Height with regard to the requested deviations.
I do. Yes, Charles Height, last name spelled H-E-Y-D-T.
Mr. Height, good evening. This is the first time we're seeing you in February. Your license is current still?
It is current. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Okay. Good evening, board members. I will be appearing tonight as well as next week, and I'm pretty sure in two weeks, because just of the projects we're working on. So it's always a pleasure. I'm gonna jump right into the deviation requests needed. To reiterate, we are in the TOD. That's Transit Oriented Development. So being that we're near the Liberty Harbor Light Rail, we have a lot of focus on decreasing automobile dependency, encouraging higher levels of density, and on a walkable, near-mass transit environment. So I am pulling up the visual impact assessment that our office prepared just to reiterate a couple points with respect to the building height and rear yard setback deviation requests. So the TOD North does allow for building heights upwards of eight stories. That's on larger properties, 9,999 square feet. But on this property, which is only 4,750, we are taking advantage of what's the affordable housing bonus section of TOD, which allows you greater stories of height and greater densities than what would be the residential zoning requirements. So we are a mixed-use building. That is a permitted use. With the affordable housing, you increase your permitted building height to five stories, 59 feet. Part of our initial design was a taller structure than 59 feet. We realized that we are in a floodplain. So part of the revisions to this application had to deal with floodplain management with the DEP, floodproofing the lowest level, and also making sure that our finished floor elevations of the residential floors are above the floodplain. In working with the floor-to-ceiling elevations of all the stories, we are allowed to take advantage of the city's ordinance, which increases the permitted height from 59 feet to 62 feet. So we do comply with the feet, but we were realizing with the predominantly commercial ground floor, we were able to accommodate a six-story of residential on that six-story. So I hope I didn't run through that too quickly, but that's the detail and evolution of this application in terms of the design. What is important to reference is that in terms of impacts in the sixth story, they're kind of related. So I'm gonna draw your attention to what is the development of the adjacent property along Pine Street. This is the eight-story development on a lot greater than 9,000 square feet. This is our... what would be our rear yard or side yard, which, again, we're marrying a blank facade to the back of our building. The redevelopment plan is... doesn't allow for us to go up to eight stories, but again, this is just contextual with respect to the zoning. In terms of the rear yard setback, the new zoning ordinance requires a rear yard point, which is basically creating light and air interior to the block. Here, we have a bit of a unique block, given this structure is really the dominant structure on the block. What we've done is created relief from the whole rear yard opposite Johnston Avenue and created that three-foot setback, three-foot, two-inch setback along this rear yard here. So you can kind of see it from an aerial standpoint. That allows us egress windows in the rear. It doesn't meet the intent of the rear point, rear yard setback point, but we actually are generating more light and air in terms of 150 square feet additional above what would be required. We're just spreading it along that rear yard. So that was some of the design intent in terms of the rear yard setback and not having that setback on the fifth and sixth stories. I spoke about the building height, building height deviation. We are able to still accommodate a mixed-use ground floor. We are accommodating... We are accommodating, we are meeting the intent of the affordable housing overlay. This is the statement of principal points that we prepared. I can leave it up, there's no issue with it. All that really amounts to the design of the project and how we're balancing development in the area, the intent of the redevelopment plan in terms of the benefits. In terms of the negative impacts, I don't see any impairment to the general welfare. Again, we are in a TOD district. This redevelopment plan oddly requires commercial parking, so we're meeting the minimum standards of commercial parking, that's why we have the off-street parking. There is no requirement for residential. We're in a TOD environment, so that's, I guess that's an answer to one of the earlier questions. I do believe we're meeting the purposes of the redevelopment plan and the MLUL with respect to guiding appropriate development for a development in a floodplain, also allowing for the inclusion of the affordable housing bonus. We're in appropriate density for this area, we are in a TOD, so that's an establishment of appropriate population densities, and we are providing a desirable visual environment with the facades of the building and the mixed-use nature. Again, I think the biggest impact when you talk about setbacks and additional stories is on light and air to adjacent properties. The visual impact assessment did identify that. The main impacts are going to be upon that eight-story blank wall that's going to be behind us. So, given that, I don't see any substantial impacts from the relief needed. Again, I do think we're promoting the intent of the redevelopment plan to provide for higher density, mid-rise development, and lower parking standards in proximity to the Hudsonburg and Light Rail Station in order to take advantage of the mass transit opportunities. These are, this is language from the redevelopment plan. So, with that, be happy to answer any questions, but I do think we tried to balance the application in terms of the relief needed.
All right, thank you, Mr. Height. I may have a question, but Matt, I want to go to you real quick.
Certainly.
So, on the parking?
Yes.
Those two spots are required for the retail space?
Under a strict reading of the redevelopment plan, correct.
Okay.
I mean, it could certainly, you know, be deemed appropriate that, you know, that the developer might want to ask for variance for that, especially for a small retail space such as that. But there's additional context here in the sense that ground floor residential development is essentially, is infeasible over here due to the height of the floodplain, and this is a reckoning we're going to have to have basically in the entire city east of Bergen Hill and Palisades going forward. And, you know, given the restricted allowable uses, a small amount of parking to provide for loading for the retail space and the like, especially taking deliveries and the like, is a fairly rational use.
Understood, it's, but if it's deemed appropriate for loading in the retail space, I don't know that it should be allowed for residential use as well. So, Mr. Patel's testimony was maybe the intent could be for that retail space owner or operator to possibly rent that space out to the public?
Yeah, I guess with regards to potentially flexing the parking over to the residential side, and the legality of that or lack thereof, council might have some clarification.
How do we calculate the two? Mr. Height's testimony is under the redevelopment plan. That commercial space requires two parking spaces. Your testimony is that under a strict reading of the redevelopment plan, that's true. I don't think the board's question is whether or not a variance could be granted as to the parking. Parking's being offered, parking's being provided in conjunction with the commercial retail space? Resolution's going to be conditioned on those spaces being in connection with the commercial retail space.
Yes, we, the applicant will be okay if the condition also provided that in the event they wanted to use it for residential, that we come back to the board or go to the planning division, but they are specifically being offered to be used as part of the retail space.
But they have to be under the redevelopment plan, if I'm understanding correctly.
So, I have to confirm the square footage, just to clarify, that's my understanding of the requirement. So, I can confirm if it's one required, two provided, or two required, two provided in one second, and I think that's important. So, let me do that. So, it is a scenario where, based on the square footage of retail, one is required and two are provided, just to clarify.
Okay, so, so that'll be a condition of approval, that it's in conjunction with the commercial space? That's what the spots are used for?
Yes.
Okay, anybody else, any questions for Mr. Height? All right, thank you, Mr. Height, appreciate it.
My pleasure, thank you.
Counsel, anything else?
No, that completes our presentation.
Okay, is there anybody here from public that wants to comment on this application? Anyone from public?
Seeing no one from the public wishing to speak, I move to close.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded, public is closed. Matt, do you have anything else you want to add?
So, planning staff uploaded a memo dated October seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, perhaps a testament to why this special meeting was necessary with the project. In that memo, it contained a list of six conditions, and then in addition to the six conditions, it sounds like it is the intent of the board to offer a seventh condition related to the use of the parking spaces, if applicant would be willing to agree those, to abide by those conditions?
Yes, all those conditions would be acceptable.
Certainly, you know, staff agrees with Mr. Height's testimony that the variances are appropriate here, and staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you, Matt.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two zero two three dash zero zero five five as presented to the board together with the additional condition of the use of parking.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded for approval with conditions.
Acting Vice Chair Gangadine?
Aye.
Commissioner, Councilwoman Prince Ari?
Aye.
Commissioner Torres?
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky?
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai?
Aye.
And Chairman Langston?
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Height's testimony, I think the deviations are well within reason, and the case is there for them, so I'm going to vote aye.
Motion carries all in favor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you again for listening this today.
Sure, thank you, counsel. Okay, so we are going to move on, I'm going to bring one case up that's out of order, we're going to call item thirteen is case P two zero two four dash zero two zero four is a minor site plan for Fifty Mall Drive.
Good evening again, everybody, James McCann from the law firm of Connell Foley, appearing on behalf of the applicant, Dick's Sporting Goods, Inc. As stated, this is a minor site plan application, it involves the former Sears Roebuck Building at the Newport Mall. Dick's Sporting Goods is going to take over the lease there and take over the building and own and operate a store there. In conjunction with that, we're here for an approval of signage, all of which is permitted under the Newport redevelopment plan, and exterior and facade upgrades and renovations to change the character of the outside of the building to the Dick's look, so to speak. I have, I can make a presentation, but I'm more than willing this evening, if the board is comfortable with it, and the chairman and staff, to allow the board to decide on the papers, because this really is a paper application, everything complies with the redevelopment plan. So, if staff and the commissioners are willing to do that, I will, I will agree to have a decision on the papers.
I agree, but I'll ask Cam, are you comfortable with that?
Yes, planning staff is comfortable with that.
Okay, so, yeah, everything's on the portal, you know, we've had a chance to review the, the application, it is in conformance with the plan?
One thing, Mr.?
Sure, go ahead.
I forget, counsel, this is a notice case. I submitted my notice affidavit of service to the portal, but I'm going to hand you the original.
Chairman, you see the affidavit of publication proof of mailing, it does appear to be the same one that was posted to the portal. I had the opportunity to review it on the portal, it does appear to be in order. Mark it as A1 for purposes of the record.
Okay, thank you, counsel. So, once again, I have no problem just, you know, voting on the merit of it, if you're comfortable with that term, counsel.
I'm comfortable.
Okay, if everybody else is okay with that, we'll just move on and open up public comment.
Yep.
Eddie, good? No? Up to you.
As long as the outside facade of the facility is meeting all the redevelopment plan co, things, then I'm okay with it, with the signage and size of it, colors of it and stuff like that, or in, within the redevelopment plan, then I'm okay with it.
Yeah, complies.
That's the part that the other neighboring stores and we are going to see from the outside, basically. You know, so, as long as that part is in the current with the redevelopment plan, then I'm comfortable with moving along.
And Cam, you could confirm that that, that it complies with the redevelopment plan?
Definitely.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that said, let's open it up for public comment. Is anybody here from the public that wants to comment on this application?
Seeing no one from the public, Mr. I move to close.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded, public is closed. Cam, your recommendation already?
Yes, the signage is customary to this zone in the plan, and planning staff only asked that the applicant agree to the conditions, if you haven't already in your opening statement, in the staff memo dated January thirtieth of this year.
Conditions agreed to.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two zero two four dash zero two zero four as presented together with staff recommendation and condition.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded with staff comments and conditions.
Commissioner Gangadine?
Aye.
Councilwoman Prince Ari?
Aye.
Commissioner Torres?
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky?
The architectural drawings look fine to me, so with the House of Sport Open, I vote aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai?
Aye.
And Chairman Langston?
Aye.
All in favor, motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, you're next, too, do we want to call them together?
Yes, I think, I think customarily, the way we do it is we call the subdivision and the site plan, we'll do one presentation, and then at the end, you'll vote on each one separately.
We'll vote separately, sure.
Okay, let me get my crew.
What do you think, an hour for this?
We're going, yes, an hour.
Mike, do you want a break? Yeah, let's, let's do a break.
Take us a minute to set up anyway.
Yeah, let's do a break while you set up, so we'll be back in about ten minutes.
All right, thank you.
Okay, could we come to order again, everybody, and we'll call item eleven and twelve? Item eleven being case P two zero two four dash zero one four one is a preliminary and final major subdivision. Item twelve is a preliminary and final major site plan with variances. The address for both is seventy-two Montgomery Street. Floor is yours, counsel.
Good evening again, everybody, James McCann from the law firm of Connell Foley in Jersey City, appearing on behalf of the applicant on both applications called. I've tendered my affidavit of service and publication on each one of the applications to counsel, and I believe they've been marked A1 for the subdivision and A1A for the site plan application. Just one other piece of housekeeping, the redevelopment plan for this project is the one, one oh, I'm sorry, one one six oh six redevelopment plan, and that redevelopment plan does require the applicant to have been designated as a redeveloper and have signed a redevelopment agreement in advance of a site plan hearing, and for the record, the applicant has done that. There's a signed executed redevelopment agreement with the JCR, which has been tendered to the planning division in the past. Ryan, can you put the first slide up?
And counsel, I believe that is on the portal, correct? I think I saw the redevelopers agreement.
I believe it is, but I'm not sure, but I know we did file it with planning. So, just as a refresher, this redevelopment plan was reviewed by this board in February of two thousand twenty-four, and as you may recall, that's an aerial view site, go back one, that's an aerial view of the site, it's the battery view, existing affordable, senior citizen affordable housing, and that aerial shows the different areas of that lot that are going to be developed pursuant to this application, should the board vote in favor of it. I put that up there just as a refresher, because I think most of you have seen this already. Next slide, please, Ryan. And this is the actual concept plan that is adopt, that was adopted with the redevelopment plan by the city council. And just really briefly, it has a couple of major components, one going from, going from Green Street across to Washington Street, a portion of the property is being reserved for a dedication of a sidewalk to the city. A new building will be constructed on the project that will have ninety affordable housing units on it in accordance with the IZO. An open space plaza on Christopher Columbus that will be not less than, that must be not less than thirty-five hundred square feet, must be constructed on that corner, and then a larger open space must be constructed on the, on the adjacent lot, which will be the subject of the subdivision. That's to be a publicly accessible green space, as, as is the, the open space plaza back on the corner of Christopher Columbus and Green. Both are to be publicly accessible, constructed by the applicant, and, and operated by the applicant in perpetuity. Okay, my first witness for my subdivision is from Judge N. Robin, they, they were in charge of the subdivision component of this application. I have Gabby Gornelli, who I'm going to ask be sworn in and qualified.
Jim, can I just ask a quick question, it has on this, it says proposed West District, and then to the right of it, proposed East District, is that an annex, or is it just space for?
The East District is the site where a new building will be developed, six hundred units with affordable, with the ninety affordable housing units, and then the West District site is the existing senior citizens' building, and as, as, obviously, as part of, after the subdivision is perfected, as part of this approval, the developer will be, will be constructing the open space on that site and reconfiguring the parking there for, for the existing senior citizens' complex.
So, counsel, the reference to West District and East District is within the redevelopment plan itself?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is, I apologize, it is, it's all part of the redevelopment plan, it's just a way of separating the new from the old, Councilman Lipsky.
So, counsel, for purposes of the record, we've marked as A1 the proof of publication notice of mailing with respect to the subdivision, we've marked as A1A the proof of publication notice of mailing with respect to the site plan. On the screen is the slide deck, it purports to be forty-eight slides, I'm going to ask that we mark that as A2 for purposes of the record. I don't know if it's this witness that you've alluded to, or some other witness that's going to go through the majority of the slide deck, but we should mark it at this point.
Yeah, so just for housekeeping, the slide deck is a combination of the filed plans and renderings that have been prepared based upon the filed plans. Also, there were revision plans submitted to this board in November of two thousand twenty-four. This entire presentation will be based upon the revisions also.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
Okay.
And Matt, I think the only thing on the portal is the draft redevelopment agreement, can you confirm that we have a signed redevelopers agreement?
That's what they've communicated to staff. I do not recall if we have a signed RDA, but, but I can reach out to JCR.
Okay.
I have it, I have it with me, I can tender it as a, as an exhibit.
Counsel, we'll accept the representation, we'll mark it as A3 for purposes of the record, it is the executed redevelopment agreement. Counsel, I suspect that that is or will be recorded. Counsel, I suspect that that is or will be recorded?
Yes, the redevelopment, so my client is presently the contract purchaser of the site. The redevelopment agreement itself is being held in escrow by the JCR council. They are recording it at the closing of title for this property, which is anticipated to be around April of 2025. So yes, it will be recorded against the property. Against, against the property with the new construction, yes, to be clear. All of which has been agreed to by the JCR.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
I do. Sure, it's Gabrielle Gornelli, G-A-B-R-I-E-L-L-E, G-O-R-N-E-L-L-I.
Ms. Gornelli, good evening. Your license is current tonight?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, you're qualified.
Thanks. So, we're going to go through both the subdivision and the site plan together. So what's on the screen now? This is the cover sheet from the civil engineering drawings. As Jim mentioned, we have a preliminary and final site plan with subdivision. 72 Montgomery, we're block 11606, Lot 1. It's a full block development with Columbus on the north, Green Street on the east, Montgomery on the south, and Washington Street on the west. Existing on the property is a 15-story residential building with some surface parking. And as Jim mentioned, we're in the block 11606 residential redevelopment plan, which is split up into the East District and the West District. You could flip the slide. So what's on the screen now? This is a colorized version of the filed subdivision plan. So the, the red lot, which is our development lot, where our proposed building is, is Lot 1.02. This lot is 24,993 square feet. The blue lot is where the existing building is. That will be Lot 1.01. It's 54,374 square feet. And that yellow color on the, on the subdivision is the piece of the right-of-way dedication that will go back to Green Street. All these lot areas comply with the minimum lot size in the redevelopment plan, which is 24,000 square feet. You could flip the slide. So what's on the screen now? This is the civil site plan, it's sheet C301 in our, in our drawing set. I'll start with.
So Gabby, let's, let's just take one minute. So that was our subdivision presentation.
So counsel, why don't we just go back, put the previous screen with the color rendering? Pretty clear to me, but
Right.
Two lots, and then the portion for the right-of-way on green.
Yes, counsel, and that concludes Gabby's testimony. But I do have Carol Wurstel, the planner, to come up just to give a brief, brief testimony on the subdivision application. So let's do her now, and then we'll go back to the site plan.
Okay.
Okay.
I do. It's Carolyn Wurstel, W-O-R-S-T-E-L-L.
Ms. Wurstel, good evening. It's been a while. Your license is current tonight?
Yes, it's been a whole seven days. It's good to see you all.
Okay, you're qualified, thank you.
Yes.
Carol, you've reviewed the redevelopment plan, correct?
Yes, I have.
And you've reviewed the subdivision plan that's up on the screen?
Yes, I have.
Okay, can you just confirm for us that the subdivision complies with the redevelopment plan requirements for both lots?
Yes, so we're seeking no variances for this proposed subdivision. Both of the proposed lots exceed the minimums. So for, I'm going to, starting on the East District, which is proposed Lot 1.02, that is the over 24,000 square feet, which is the minimum that is required in that East District. On our West District, which is the blue lot, we are exceeding the minimum square feet, which is 50,000 square feet. That's the minimum for that, that district. And so both lots exceed the minimum that is required. And in addition, there is an existing building on proposed Lot 101, which is in the West District. And that district was designed to maintain the permitted use of, and use and occupation of that building. So that everything about the proposed, the redevelopment plan with the subdivision, everything remains conforming with regard to the bulk for, the use and bulk for that building. So it is a conforming use, it's still a conforming density, conforming height, coverages, setbacks, off-street parking and curb cuts. So everything about the proposed subdivision is conforming with what was written into the redevelopment plan.
What's the use in the West District?
The existing use in the West District is, it's permitted to be senior citizen housing.
Is it about affordable senior citizens?
Affordable senior citizen housing.
And Carolyn, that's the only permitted use in that district, correct?
Yes, that's the only permitted use for a building. I think the only other permitted use would be the open space. But yes, that's the only permitted use for a building in, in that district.
Right, and that, and the purpose of making that the only permitted use is to preserve the existing senior citizen affordable housing on that site?
Yes, that was.
That's one of the goals of the redevelopment plan, correct?
Yes, that was the, the purpose and intent of that West District is to maintain that existing building, so the permitted use of both the principal and accessory structures was to continue that senior affordable housing.
And in fact, the same principle applies for the bulk standards, correct? The bulk standards, once this subdivision is granted, and those bulk standards apply, that building will be a permitted structure under the zoning, correct?
Yes, exactly.
Another attribute of continuing the affordable housing on that site.
Correct.
And in fact, it even quotes the same number of units, correct?
Correct.
And you've done some due diligence on this property for like over two years now. Do you know what the permitted, what the current permitted use on Lot 101 is right now?
Yeah, it's affordable senior housing.
Thank you.
That's under the current zoning prior to the adoption of the redevelopment plan, counsel?
Under the prior redevelopment plan, it's, it's a permitted use, yes, and it is a permitted use under this new redevelopment plan. Yep.
But under the prior, it's as for the entire Lot 1, because the subdivision, obviously?
That's correct.
Getting a car.
Yes, yes, sir.
And counsel, I, can you tell us the number of units? Or can the witness tell us the number of units and if?
My understanding is 237 units of affordable housing.
That complies both in terms of the prior redevelopment plan and the new redevelopment plan in terms of any density variance or anything of that nature?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Carol.
Any questions for Ms. Wurstel?
I just want to, some clarification on the, the, once we go through the subdivision, the new building that's going to be built, the high-rise and the existing building. Are we still having 90 affordable housing in the high-rise building? Or that is being counted on to the 15-story building?
No, no, Commissioner, the, they're totally independent. The 237 units referenced on the blue area, which is the existing project, that's 237 units. When this project in the red area is built, there will be in addition 90 more
Additional 90 more.
as required by the IZO.
Thank you, that's all that's be clear.
So Commissioners, just so everyone's clear, the purpose of asking the questions with respect to the current use of the property and the use going forward in the redevelopment plan is because, God forbid, you attempted to subdivide property and create a use that's not permitted. That's problematic. This board doesn't have jurisdiction over such an application. In a redevelopment plan, you can't have a use that's not permitted. But generally speaking, under the MLUL, if you were to try to subdivide property and you create a non-conforming use as a result of that, and/or you now have a use that's not permitted, then this board wouldn't have jurisdiction over a use that's not permitted. So we need clarification to make sure that in conjunction with the subdivision, the use is permitted as it exists and will continue to be permitted after the subdivision. Counsel, do you take any issue with any of those statements?
I do not.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Ms. Wurstel.
Okay, recall Ms. Gornelli for site plan testimony?
Okay, so onto the site plan. This is the 301 sheet from the civil drawing, starting with our development lot, Lot 1.02. The proposed building, it's a mixed-use building with residential retail. The residential lobby is located on the south of the building. The utilities rooms generally wrap the east side of the building, and then there's retail on the north and on the southern. No, there's nothing on the southern. There is a access drive to the west of the building, which is for parking access. There is off-street loading, and there's entrance to a parking garage off of that. This parking garage will include 120 parking spaces for the residents. There are 600 units in the building that complies with the parking requirements. The parking will also include 61 spaces for Battery View residents, which will be located on the first and second floors of the building. The, the garage parking includes EV parking, which is in compliance with EV standards. The building coverage is 67.9%, which complies. The lot coverage is 94.4%, which complies with the requirements. We do have a minor deviation along the access drive to the west, where a sidewalk is required, the full length of that. Due to the grade change of the site, there's significant grade change from the south to the north, where Montgomery Street is about elevation 13, and Columbus Drive is about elevation 5. So with that grade change, in order to have a sidewalk there, you would need to eat up a lot of that required open space to make it work with ramping and such. And in discussions with city planning, you know, we opted to request this deviation in order to preserve the required amounts of open space per the redevelopment plan. As Jim mentioned, the open space plaza, which is located to the north of the building, as well as the open space on Lot 1.01, which includes a dog park and some open space areas. The landscape architect will talk a little bit more about those open space areas. Other parts of the development include where we're proposing some drop-off zones on Montgomery Street and on Columbus, in front of the lobby and in front of the retail space. This will be mostly for a short-term drop-off, as the off-street loading is, is, will be used for, for larger deliveries. And then we have a access drive from the Lot 1.01, which will come from the parking lot there. The proposed plans on Lot 1.01 include a reconfiguration of that existing parking lot to service the residents there. So the total number of parking spaces between the parking garage and the surface spaces to remain on the Battery View lot will remain the same as they are now for the Battery View residents. So you have the 61 in the garage, and you have 24 on the surface lot. The garage spaces for the Battery View residents, there is a sidewalk along the southern portion of that access drive, so that any residents that are, you know, parking in this garage can walk along that sidewalk into their building. And there's an elevator across that crosswalk right there for, for Battery View residents that are parking in that garage. You could flip to the next sheet.
So counsel, just to be clear, the seniors are going to have to cross that access driveway to get to the parking spaces?
So yes, they are. They would, they would exit, they would exit from their own building, which is on, in the middle of Montgomery.
Right.
Walk along the public sidewalk, then walk along the sidewalk on the private drive to the crosswalk and enter the lobby and elevators for the parking, for the portion of the parking garage that, garage that's reserved for their use. And basically, the way the site's laid out now, they have to walk out of their building and walk over to the, the parking lot that's presently there. So it's pretty much the same distance of a walk, depending on where your car is parked. But they're going to be able to park their cars indoors now instead of outdoors, many of them.
And also, this drive, it's going to be decorative treatment, a decorative pavement treatment, which lends itself to being more pedestrian-friendly, so cars driving on it will, will feel like it's a pedestrian zone.
It's not a public street, that's just a drive for the project.
Is there going to be access? How do you prevent the public from trying to cut through from Montgomery to Christopher Columbus or vice versa? I assume it's one-way traffic, but?
One-way traffic from Montgomery to Columbus? But there'll be signage there that says it's a private driveway, no access, residents only.
But just signage, no barrier or anything?
There wasn't a plan for a gate at this point in time, no.
And there is an existing curb cut in, in the general area of the proposed one on Montgomery.
So the elevation from Montgomery to the crosswalk to the elevator is still about the same?
So, so that, yeah, that portion is, is accommodating a sidewalk. It's, it's fairly flat, and then from that point on, it gets fairly steep.
Yep.
Yeah, you have 181 garage parking, or it is combined with the surface parking?
181 inside the garage.
And how about the surface parking, how many you have?
24, so 24 surface spaces, those are all for Battery View, plus 61 inside the garage for Battery View. That, that's equivalent to the number of surface spaces they have now.
And those spaces pursuant to the redevelopment plan will be free of charge to the residents of the Battery View? And they'll, the spaces will be reserved to them pursuant to an easement between the owner of the existing senior citizen affordable housing project and the applicant.
And with the senior building, you have surface parking? How much of surface parking you have?
24.
121 is in the senior building?
No, 24. 24 senior spaces.
24.
24.
I'm talking to you.
Show the commissioner where the, commissioner decide where the arrow is. That's where the, the senior citizen's surface parking will be.
Proposed. Proposed.
Proposed, yes, sorry, for the, for the residents of that project.
So that one is free for everybody? Or you charge for that?
No, that's not, that's not the applicant's property. My understanding is there's no charge for that either. But that's not really, that, that's up to the owner of the senior citizen affordable housing project. I don't believe they charge for the parking. But across in the new building, there will be no charge to the senior citizens.
Even the garage, there is no charge?
Even the garage, there's no charge. That's a requirement of the redevelopment plan that my client is complying with.
From your client, though?
From my client, yes.
But that's only for the senior?
I'm sorry, that's only for the Battery View spots?
Only for the Battery View, the remainder of the spots will be market rate.
Yes.
For the residents of the new proposed project.
Yes.
And no senior spaces will be deeded to the?
They will not be deeded, but they will be memorialized by a written easement agreement between the owner of the two buildings, saying that the first two floors of the garage will be reserved to the Battery View residents. And they will have a separate elevator that only goes to those two floors so that they can have access and some security for their own cars. And that the residents of the other part of the project will have separate elevators for them, for their part of the project. Make sense?
Sure.
Yep.
Thank you, counsel.
I guess I'll ask if there's any other questions, because we're going to flip off the site plan, onto the lighting plan.
Just, Gabby, did you say it's this build, this building will be, the new proposed building will be 600 units?
600 units, 90 of which are affordable.
And the, the retail space, do you have that number?
I don't have the number of the retail.
The square feet?
Yeah.
It's on the application 2788.
33, 3,300, no, that's the plaza.
Yeah.
2788.
2788, thank you. Thank you, everybody.
That was a test.
And counsel, in addition to that parking agreement, there'll also be various easement agreements with respect to, I suspect, the drive aisle, the open space, and, and things of that nature?
Yes. Which I was planning to discuss after the rest of the presentation.
Fair.
If required.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Gornelli.
Could flip to the lighting plan. So this is the, the lighting plan from the civil drawings, L701. There's, there's really four main elements. There's really four main elements of lighting here. There's the access drive to the west of the building, the surface parking lot for the senior building, the open space areas along the north and the sidewalks. We do comply with the lighting ordinance for all of these areas. The standard Jersey City standard light is used for the sidewalks. I guess something else to mention, too, along the sidewalks, which I didn't mention on the prior slide, is we do comply with the minimum sidewalk width inside the redevelopment plan of five feet. And then, yeah, all the lighting complies with, in the parking lot, the drive aisle and the open space areas.
So the lighting there is an upgrade or is it new installment? For the West District property?
It will be new because the parking lot is being reconfigured. So this is our grading and drainage plan. I'll just speak briefly to this. The site is located in a flood zone, so we are required to raise our residential lobby above the flood elevation, which we are doing. We're compliant with that. We are in with the NJDEP. Actually, we're hoping we have an approval this month. Non-residential spaces are being flood-proofed in accordance with the flood hazard rules. The site, because it's in a flood zone, we're required to meet the green area ratio on the site, which we are compliant with. And we are compliant with the Jersey City Stormwater Control Ordinance. We are a major development, so we are compliant with that. I can speak to other utilities. If there's interest, there's existing mains in, you know, Montgomery Street and Green Street, which we are connecting to with our building services.
Yeah, I don't think, anybody want to hear about connections? So we're connections, water, connections, taps. Okay, thank you.
That concludes my testimony unless there's questions.
Okay, anything else from Ms. Cornelli? Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Architectural testimony from Mr. Gary Handel of Handel Architecture.
I do. Gary Handel, G A R Y H A N D E L.
Mr. Handel, good evening. We've qualified you in the past. Your license is current tonight?
It is, thank you.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified again.
So it's good to see you again, and it's a pleasure to present this project. And we'll go next. So this image shows two of the key features of the project architecturally. One is a highly crafted, well-detailed brick base, which creates a nice pedestrian scale for the project as it meets Columbus, Green, and Montgomery. And the slide to the right is a skyline image of the project, which shows another feature, which is a distinctively shaped crown for the building, which will allow this building to take its place on the Jersey City skyline. And go next. Before we dig deeper into the plans, we wanted to address a few deviations and variances that are a part of the application. In the image on the left, you can see the signage hung vertically from the northeast and northwest corners of the podium. In our application, we refer to these signs as A2 and A3. We're seeking a deviation from the signage requirements of the land development ordinance for these two signs to be located above the ground floor. Additionally, these signs exceed the 30-inch maximum vertical dimension for building identification signs permitted by the redevelopment plan. Each individual letter complies. They're just organized vertically as opposed to horizontally. Carolyn Wristel of Dresner-Robin will cover all of the deviations and variances more extensively later in the presentation, but I just wanted to point them out as part of the application of the architectural presentation.
Just as a practical matter, that, the thought there is a little bit of creativity just because of the open space, the signage could become a beacon for a meeting place, things like that. So that's really the reason for the request for the deviation.
Yes, correct. On the left is a pedestrian view from the southeast corner of Christopher Columbus and Green. We wanted to note that part of our application proposes fabric awnings cantilevered from the facade. Per the redevelopment plan, we're permitted to have these awnings cantilevered beyond the setback line, provided that there's 20 feet of vertical clearance maintained between the sidewalk and the underside of the awnings. We're proposing 12 feet of vertical clearance between grade of the open space plaza and the bottom of the fabric awnings. On the right is a pedestrian-level view of the intersection of Montgomery Street and Green Street, illustrating what pedestrians walking along Montgomery Street would see on their walk back from the Exchange Place Path Station. In this view, you can see the corner of the residential lobby, wrapped by brick arches and protected from the elements by a corbelled aluminum awning.
Gary, that 12-foot awning, that's still safe for pedestrians to pass under there, correct?
Sure. And it's not, and it's not over a sidewalk. It's, you know, basically, this is really more of a clarification. The redevelopment, it talks about clearance above a sidewalk. This is above an open space plaza. The clearance for that is less defined. We feel it's actually more appropriate at the 12 feet in order to actually be useful. You know, like, if it was at 20 feet, it would be too high to be useful.
Thank you.
And here you have a closer view of the corner of Montgomery and Green Streets. After conversations with representatives of the Historic Paulus Hook Association and Powerhouse Arts, we came up with a revised design for the podium that responds to their feedback about creating a pedestrian-scaled series of elements on the ground floor level. We've designed a continuous awning that wraps around the corner of Montgomery and Green, marking the residential lobby, while planter boxes add vibrancy and warmth to the pedestrian experience. Part of this application seeks a few variances from the Jersey City Land Development Ordinance that restrict architectural elements projecting across the lot line to six inches or less. We're proposing planter boxes along the Green Street facade that'll project 11 inches across the lot line, more than 20 feet above the sidewalk grade. And we're proposing a metal awning that protects, projects no more than six feet across the lot line into the public right-of-way, no less than 17 feet above the sidewalk grade.
All design deviations that you believe will enhance the character of the building on that corner, correct?
Yes, and part of our series of conversations with the neighborhood associations, we had a much higher base with those elements up higher and in compliance. And, you know, and so the lowering in scale, which we think was a good thing, brings it more in the scale of a pedestrian, actually is more useful. The slight additional projection of the planter boxes came out of conversations with our landscape architect in order to have planting that would actually live. Thank you. These are two sections through the building highlighting the locations of the various uses. Per the redevelopment plan and the land development ordinance, we're permitted to build 600 feet high from the base flood elevation plus one foot, with an exception for rooftop appurtenances of up to 30 feet above that height. Our application proposes a building height of 597 feet 6 inches and asks for a variance to include a rooftop appurtenance of 37 feet 6 inches, which is necessary to accommodate one enclosed mechanical bulkhead and screened open-air mechanical roof spaces, bringing the total height of the project to 635 feet above the base flood elevation plus one foot. The podium is about 105 feet tall from the ground floor, housing the residential lobby at grade retail spaces and six stories of parking, as well as the mechanical and back-of-house spaces. At floors nine and 10, we've designed a break between the podium and the tower, where our primary amenity spaces and landscaped amenity decks are located. Above the podium and amenity floors are 44 residential floors, housing the 600 residential units mentioned, topped by a sky lounge at floor 55 and mechanical bulkhead above that.
Mr. Handel, the allowance is 30 feet. We're asking for 37.6, so we're really asking for a seven-foot variance, correct?
Which is required to enclose all of the mechanical equipment that we have.
Right, and you're going to, you're going to show the board two more variances, and all of these variances, the purpose is going to be to enclose the mechanicals and have a better-looking building at the top, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
From that height, it steps down, counsel?
Yeah.
Yep.
At the top of the building, we've designed the crown of the building to have a distinctive profile that's both identifiable on the skyline and to accommodate a variety of mechanical and amenity spaces. Focusing on the mechanical portion of the crown, the land development ordinance permits a maximum rooftop coverage of 20% of tower roof area for all rooftop appurtenances and requires setbacks from street-facing facades. Part of our application asks for a variance to these requirements, such that we do not have setbacks from Christopher Columbus and Green Street tower facades, resulting in a rooftop appurtenance coverage of about 65% at the most. As the crown steps back, the higher we go, the appurtenance coverage area shrinks at each level from 65% to 53% to 41%. The design of the crown has integrated all of these variances into one sculptural element, free of unsightly mechanical bulkheads or visible equipment, and is sized appropriately to house and screen these mechanical elements that are typical for a residential building of this size. And here you can again see, you know, the resultant of that aerial perspective of the building with Hudson River in the background. And really, the idea is to shape all of that required mechanical equipment into a sculptural element, which will create that distinctive crown and really create a building that'll have a distinctive signature on the skyline. And here, next, you can see a detail of that crown with our decorative lighting element, which should be, again, you know, creating something that is distinctive on the skyline, and then go next. And then a view from Battery Park at Sunrise, basically showing how this building will take its place on the future skyline of Jersey City. Now that we've taken a general overview of the project and mentioned the variances and deviations, we'll do a quick walk through the proposed plans. On the ground floor, as Carolyn, you know, as Gabby had mentioned, we have the lobby located at the southern aspect of the site off of Montgomery. That's where the site actually meets the floodproof elevation. So that's really where we are at 13 feet. So the entrance is right at where we come above the flood level plus one into the lobby, into the lobby element. To the north, you can see that 2780 square feet of leasable commercial space that will look out onto the landscaped open space plaza across Christopher Columbus. This will energize and enhance the pedestrian experience along Columbus, which you'll hear more about from our landscape architect, and create a welcoming feature to people coming and going from the Exchange Place Path Station. At the northwest corner of the building, there's a direct connection from the new open space along Christopher Columbus to a secure residential entrance point and the open space plaza. You can see the required mechanical open spaces located along Green Street. This is the proposed parking level. There will be six levels, as mentioned, two dedicated to the Battery View tenants. And our proposal also incorporates storage for over 300 bicycles in the parking garage as required by the RDP. Bike racks will be provided on each level of the parking as indicated in the plan. Above an amenity floor, we have the residential floor plans. The building has an overall unit mix of 22% studios, 41% one-bedrooms, 31% two-bedrooms, and 6% three-bedrooms, adding up to the 600-unit total in the building as mentioned. You can see here the primary elevations of the building, southeast, north, and west, with the base and tower elements clearly delineated, separated by the amenity spaces. And then here, we'd like to show you the material samples, which we have on the table. And so for the exterior of the tower, we've chosen a lightly tinted glass in a curtain wall system with painted metal mullions and an integrated continuous louver band to screen high-efficiency heat pumps behind.
We actually have some samples. Do you want us to pass them around? Want to see them or?
Sure, you brought them. Let's see them.
Nice to be in person.
Right.
Yeah.
At the break between the brick podium and the glass tower, we're proposing stainless steel column covers and soffit with floor-to-ceiling storefront glazing system, where mechanical louvers are glazed in where necessary. We're very proud of the articulated brick base, and so...
It's different.
So this is a blend of cloud ceramics, terracotta, and Cherokee blend, which will create, which will be integrated to form those corbelled elements in the facade that we've been showing you. And so each of those will, of those corbelled elements will be highly detailed with the planter boxes set into them with painted side-proof louvers filling in between the brick piers. At the base of those brick piers will be the granite base to provide a water course for those buildings. And that all of the planted materials will be irrigated and maintained by ownership
I already saw it.
to keep the plantings healthy and to preserve the natural visual enhancement to the street's.
This is harsh, you know. This is very... I'm building one near my office, so I'll have...
So the idea really is to craft the base so that it can anchor itself into the context. You're using that highly detailed brick base, the granite water course, you know, and the detailing there to really create a wonderful experience for the pedestrians. This is a street-level perspective from Montgomery looking north at the entrance to the residential lobby. At the pedestrian level, we propose those articulated brick facades with brick arches, corbels, and a variety of textures. Along the residential lobby storefront at the corner, we're proposing to have the planter boxes integrated into the stone base between the brick piers in addition to the planter boxes at each bay above the ground floor. In the two bays left of the main entrance, we're proposing additional articulation and texture with those brick elements. Along the sidewalk, along the residential lobby, is that metal awning and canopy, which is designed to echo the corbelled nature of the brickwork and to indicate the building identification. This will wrap up the architectural portion of the presentation, showing the perspective from Christopher Columbus, illustrating the landscaped open space plaza and commercial storefront with landscaped elements integrated into the design of the facade, enhancing the environment along Christopher Columbus.
Thank you, Gary.
All right, thank you, Mr. Handel. Just a couple of quick questions. The signage on the podium of the building, is that illuminated?
I think the, we're having, that'll show up in the deviations. I think it's, the idea is that it would be backlit
Okay.
to spill light onto the brick facade.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a question.
Sure.
How do you differentiate between parking lot and the upper stories? Is it the red one which is parking lot?
So the, you know, the parking lot?
Garage.
Yeah.
Outside the red tiles is the parking garage?
Yeah, so the parking garage, you can see, starts with the square windows and the...
And how many floors are there?
Six stories. Each story has approximately 30 cars. You know, and so with two of those floors for the Battery View tenants, served by their own parking structure, four above that for the residents of the building.
And the planter boxes on the upper, you know, the second floor and up, you mentioned that it's management's responsibility to maintain those boxes.
There'll be...
Let me in on how?
Yeah, so the, you know, so the, so there will be maintenance protocol for the entire base facade in terms of, it's all reachable by, you know, by cherry picker. And then the, but the, and they'll be irrigated, you know, basically, so they shouldn't require that much maintenance, but should we need to get them, they're all, they would all be accessible from street cherry pickers.
Okay. All right, anybody else?
Yeah, I have a quick question. I really like your brick design, but as they brought it around, the question I'm asking, the, are those full-size bricks you're using? They are full-size, so it's not what I'm seeing glued onto something?
Yeah, so we're still, yeah, so those are real bricks.
Real brick.
Yeah.
Full-size, no other, okay. The question I asked was, are they going to be that skinny? And I got kind of like a yes answer, and I was like, okay, how is that going to work? You know, especially with this design that you have. I don't see that.
So we need, we need to use thick because of the stepping?
Yes.
We couldn't use the thin?
You couldn't use it.
You know, so that the, so this is going to be nice, you know, like we're...
So I got the, I got the wrong knot. I saw it the wrong way. Okay, but yes, it's a very nice design that you're doing too with it, so it'll go that way. Thank you.
Real brick, Eddie. Real brick. Imagine that.
So another question. On Montgomery and Green, so you have that fire hydrant, and you're saying that...
and you're saying that's the principal entrance, or the drop-off entrance?
So, the, so, let's go to, so the, 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 the principal entrance for the lobby will be midpoint on Montgomery. So the, the street actually crowns up there, you know, and so that's really where we come to the, you know, one foot above the, you know, the DFE, you know, like, so in order to manage the grades, that's the best place to enter, you know, to enter the building.
So what's a drop-off lane?
It's, it's really just a place to, you know, to, if you're, if you were being dropped off with, you know, in an Uber or Lyft, you know, or something like that, you know, or, but the idea really is that if you're coming, if you're coming into the parking lot, you would use the dedicated drive turn into the parking, the parking lot, yep.
The reason I ask that is, is that there are parking meters there, and they're also in your drawings, and also on Google Maps, white hashtags, you know, for city acknowledgement. So I don't know how you kind of work that in with the city, or...
Yeah, so we'll be working, so, so Dresner, our Dresner team, you know, on the civil side, has been in conversation with everybody to basically make sure that everything fits and can come back and, you know, and work, and be, and be worked out.
Thank you.
So counsel, that begs the question, that drop-off lane that's depicted on this ground floor plan drawing, that's obviously in the right of way of Montgomery Street, correct?
I believe so, yes.
That would go to Gabby, I think.
Yeah, I think, I think maybe Ms. Cornelli can answer those questions, but I can tell you, we have gotten comments from traffic engineering for this project, and Dresner has been working with them regularly, and we're prepared to say tonight that we're gonna continue to work with them to comply with their comments to the project. Off the top of my head, I don't remember if they commented on the component that you're asking about, but they did. Gabby, come, come back up. Yeah, of course.
Yeah, so we, we actually met last week with Division of Transportation Planning and Traffic Engineering, and, and we spoke about the loading zones, and, you know, they, they had indicated in their letter that they want some treatment to the bike lanes in the area, which we said we would work with them to, to figure that all out, as well as, you know, looking at the loading zones, which, you know, right now, the parking spaces go very close to the corner. So that was really the intention, was to, you know, have, and have the loading zone closer to the corner to kind of not have parking so close to the corner, and they had agreed with, with that.
So Gabby, I don't know if you can see the...
I guess you can't see.
Where's the loading zone?
Or the drop-off lane, I should, I should call it, is what we're, yeah.
Loading is done off of the, the dedicated access drive?
There is off-street loading, yeah.
You were referring to the drop-off.
Correct, yeah, that, yeah, the drop-off zone.
There's, there's two, to be clear. It's, one's not labeled on this drawing, but one is on, asked for and proposed for along Christopher Columbus as well. It's normal for any sort of on-street loading areas or drop-off lanes, whatever we may call them, to seek and need council approval.
Right.
Regardless of whether or not they're shown here, they would need to seek that.
But I guess my question is, does the plan require it, the redevelopment plan?
No, I don't believe so.
And if it doesn't, then it's completely within the discretion of the council. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Cornelli.
I have a question to add that. When you say the drop-off is closer to the corners, and I know Montgomery Street is two lanes on that, in that turn, as you work with engineering and trafficking, we still have to keep in mind the emergency vehicles.
Of course, yeah.
Because the, once you put something on, close to a corner, and, and that, and that's, in that area, it'll make it very difficult for emergency vehicles to maneuver.
Of cour, of course, yeah, any, any emergency vehicles that would need to...
That stays in that conversation of safety for the emergency vehicles. That's all.
Also noted, and you know, is there's a fire hydrant there, so...
Yeah, yes.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Cornelli. Anybody else? Architectural questions? Anything?
Somebody, I have a quick question. I know, counsel, you said that the West End property, the West District, basically, is a separate owner?
Yes, Commissioner.
Okay, so as you do the open space in those areas, those, if I'm not mistaken, that whole area is fenced off? It's a six-foot fence-like around that property?
That's my recollection, yes, currently.
Are they planning to bring the six-foot fence around to the thing, or this, the section where your private access drive is not gonna continue with a fence, or closed an area on that side? You might not be able to answer that.
I was gonna say, I think I'm gonna defer that question to either Ms. Cornelli or the landscape architect. Could, he hasn't, they haven't done their presentation yet, but they could probably...
Oh, okay, then, if we didn't, then I'll wait for that. I could wait for that, please.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Handel.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Counsel?
All right, next witnesses are Mr. Rick Osterlof and Rick Parisi, both from MPFP Landscape Architecture. What we're gonna do is, we're gonna, oh, let me just start this up. Rob, you have to get sworn in.
I do. Rob, R-O-B, Osterlof, O-S-T-E-R-L-O-F.
Mr. Osterlof, are you a New Jersey licensed landscape architect?
Yes.
And are you familiar with the redevelopment plan that we're discussing tonight?
Yes.
And the Jersey City Land Development Ordinance?
Yes.
And did your firm prepare the landscape plans that are filed with the board and that your firm gonna, is gonna present tonight?
Yes.
And when you did your work, did you also work with your colleague, Rick Parisi, who's also a member of the firm?
Yes.
And are you requesting that Mr. Parisi give the presentation on your behalf tonight under your license?
If it pleases the board.
Okay, and that license is current?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, you're qualified.
Thank you. Rick, please come up. This is Mr. Parisi.
Sure.
He is also a landscape architect for the same firm, who prepared and worked on these plans along with Mr. Osterlof, and he's gonna give us the presentation. He's never testified before this board, so, Mr. Parisi, once you're sworn in, would you give your qualifications?
I don't need qualifications, right?
Yes, I do. Rick, R-I-C-K, P-A-R-I-S-I.
Mr. Parisi, we know you're not licensed in New Jersey, but could you tell the board how many places you are licensed in?
Nine states.
Why not Jersey? That's what I was...
I will explain. My partner is from New Jersey...
Okay.
... and has always dealt with, you know, a lot of the, where we needed license in, in New Jersey. I, I started in New York. The firm started in New York in nineteen fifty-eight. I have thirty-nine years' experience, and I started with the New York license, the Florida license, Texas, and everything, but, but I have filed for a New Jersey, so I don't need to make Mr. Osterlof come out, although he lives in New Jersey, so, so it's okay.
All right, and you also have a lot of experience in urban landscape architecture, correct?
Yes, our, our firm, for those of you who are familiar with urban designers, our firm was founded by Paul Friedberg. So it's M. Paul Friedberg &amp; Partners, MPFP. We, we, you know, we, our roots are in urban design, clearly, founded in New York City. Most of our work is, is, you know, either in urban areas, on top of buildings, or, or creating new urban areas. That said, we, we, we did do Randall's Island in New York City, all of it.
Request that you accept Mr. Parisi's experience as a landscape architect?
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You know, one of the interesting things, and I have to applaud the redevelopment plan, because as landscape architects, we don't have the opportunity to have the full block be an open space, right? And so, it's, it's a wonderful thing for us, right? When we were brought onto the project, this was an easy project for us, right? So, we're usually carving open space out of places we don't have it. The requirement is for fifteen thousand square feet of open space, we're providing over seventeen thousand square feet of open space, and as Gary mentioned, you know, the, the goal of this project is to have this building land in the open space, be a human scale, you know, be a touchy-feely scale with the brick, corbelled brick, and, and, you know, be part of the neighborhood, right? And as you see, the slide that's up now still, that, that's the plaza, as Gary mentioned, those, those honey locust trees will be limbed up over twelve feet, so we have clear visibility into the open space. The, the open space is envisioned as, as kind of a potentially programmable space. It has movable tables and chairs for the public, it has a retail base, so we hope it, you know, that it's very active and becomes the cornerstone of the neighborhood, and very inviting cornerstone. Next. The enlargement of, of the open space, you can see that it's about a hundred and fifteen feet long, thirty-eight feet deep. It's thirty-eight hundred and twenty square feet, the requirement is thirty-five hundred square feet. Again, the honey locust trees, one of the other requirements of the, of the redevelopment plan, is that the paving be distinctive. We are using, you know, two distinctive granites, granite pavements, and the planter walls that we do have are very low, because we have about a one-foot to one-and-a-half-foot grade change, and so we have a low level of planter walls, granite steps, invite you right in, multiple openings into the open space, and, as Gary mentioned, the base of the building is granite, so it all ties together seamlessly.
And just for the record, just to be clear, this is the open space plaza, which has to be a minimum of thirty-five hundred square feet, and the open space plaza is adjacent to the new building on the, on the site where the new building will be, so...
The East District.
East District, yep.
Okay, next. Just again, the materials we're using, very quickly, two granites, right, and the granite steps, granite planters. We are using tree grates to, you know, under these honey locusts, to like expand the usable space, rather than having planters there. You know, an interesting Salux contemporary pole light in between the trees. Again, you can see the tree canopy, these, these trees are honey locusts, and, you know, one of the requirements is that the tree, the shade trees be minimum forty feet, not installed they, but, but be species that grows to that, and they all comply. Next. The planting, really quickly, one important thing, you see the hedge along the driveway. You know, the one thing that, that kind of interrupts our open space is the driveway, and one of the requirements for that driveway is that it be screened with a minimum of four-foot hedge. The pathway from the street is, is about a one-and-a-half-foot grade change in there, so there's a very subtle grade change along that access point, and you see the hedge that screens the, the drive. Next. So, this, this view is, is really interesting, because everybody's spoken about how, how the building is human scale, and the green on the building, which, which is, you know, a wonderful thing that we have a developer that will do that, and we, we are, you know, bringing that human scale down into the plaza, this, this kind of formal alley of trees, you know, transitions into a very informal open space, and the entire length of this is, the whole length of this block is three hundred and ninety feet, only interrupted by that drive. And I think this view really starts to illustrate what people in the neighborhood will, how they'll see this building and this development. Next. Again, we have a requirement of fifteen thousand square feet, we, we are providing over seventeen thousand square feet, we are exceeding the dog-run requirement of twenty-five hundred square feet, we're in the three thousand, three hundred and thirty-four range, and we have what we've, working with city planning over a period of time, speaking about the passive space, there was a request and a thought that we do something a little more active, and so we created a kind of a playful mounded area that has a, a play, a play-trail on it, that's wood, right, and, and then it has these safety surface mounds with trees coming out of it. So it's a little playful space. Throughout this passive open space, we have seating that is built in, it's all very fluid and organic, and it's built into the little alcoves. The, again, the dog-run has three entrances, there was some mention of the grade change. If you note, on the driveway, you're much higher, so you enter in on the upper elevation of the dog-run around eleven, and then the dog-run area is gently sloped, so you can transition back down to nine. And part of that sloping is made up with a, with a sloping seat wall, that's a very playful wall, again, that you see in white there.
So is the play area for children, or is it for seniors?
It's for everybody. Right? Because...
Strollers and skateboarders.
Everybody, yeah, yeah, it's for everybody, right? And, and I, I think, you know, it's, this, this type of linear space, you know, really doesn't call for a piece of play equipment, right? We wanted this to be a place where people will meet and hang out, and, and kids could run and have fun. So kids like to run on lawns, they like to run up and down things, so we provided a little bit of entertainment there, right? You know, it's, it's, again, if you go to the next slide, you'll see, I think, again, what I've been speaking about, and what Gary was speaking about, you know, we have a, a landscape terrace that goes through a landscape facade that lands in a landscape plaza, right, and that transitions to this really natural, free-form, flowing open space, with, with many, many openings in it. There's like five openings and ways to get in this, there's multiple ways mid-block to get into this open space. You know, next. So this is an enlargement plan, you see the rolling hills there, you see the arrows, those are the entry points in, you can see the grade changes. You're at seven point five on the corner to the left, right? You're at elevation nine in the middle, right? And then you come into the dog-run at nine there, and the dog-run slopes to eleven, and then it goes back down, and there's a set of stairs that drops down to elevation seven. So, you know, we have a, we have a lot of grade change occurring within the site while the street's level, so we're mitigating that with these rolling mounds and rolling planted areas, and, and, you know, that's how we kind of arrived at the very natural, free-form, you know, layout of this whole, whole plaza.
So a question on that.
Yes.
Is the adventure area marked off by hedges, and so the, so kids can't come running or playing?
Fence.
A fence, okay.
Yeah, so there's not a fence to, towards the street side, that's open, right? The mounds are there, right? And then there's a fence from, because I think this question was brought up before, there's a fence along the whole parking lot, along the back, and along the back of the dog-run in there, and then it's open.
So it's, Commissioner, I think your question is, is there a fence on the...
No, 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 he answered it, because my concern was, is if kids come adventuring into the parking lot, and there are seniors who are not twenty-twenty vision or not...
They're adventuring also.
They're adventuring, yeah.
They may have their own...
Everybody's adventuring.
It may become a bad situation, so...
No, it's a good question. Good question, there's a fence, it's all fenced.
I think it was Commissioner Torres had a question about a fence on the other side, did you not, Commissioner?
Yeah, I was just, I can see it clearer now, but the, my concern wasn't that the fence that's existing will continue across the front of the walkway part up from Montgomery Street to Christopher Columbus Drive, right?
Oh, Montgomery, okay.
Yeah, yeah, you're going on that side, on the, on the sidewalk area, the walk area, that they didn't put a fence on that one between your building and the existing building.
No, there's, there's...
There's no fence there, that stays open then.
That's open.
So this fence will basically end somewhere along that dog-run.
Well, they have a fence around their parking lot, right? And, and...
The whole parking lot is fenced, the whole property's fenced off.
So, it's a good question, because we know that they're gonna continue to fence the opposite side, right? We, we know that they want access on this side, so there, there has to be an opening, and that's what we've shown.
Yeah, 'cause the whole property right now, even the property that you are gonna build on, is fenced in.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, so I'm just wondering, on the east side, are you gonna, you're eliminating the fence, from what I can see on the drawing, right? There be no fence there?
No fence.
So, are they gonna be putting a fence on the east side of their property, where their property ends? But you could not answer that, because it's a different owner.
Yes.
Well, if you, you have to, if you wanna see, you have to go to the overall plan, if you wanna, if we can point to it, right?
Yeah.
So the drive is open, and as you go up the drive, you want, they want access right there, so we have a fence, we have a fence that they could put a gate further back and have access there, but I don't, I don't know what they're, how they're...
We don't know what their tents are, okay.
Yeah, right?
Yeah, okay.
The red dash on this, the red dash line on this is the proposed fence.
Yeah, correct.
It's a, the red dots are the fence that you're gonna put up, which would be basically safety for people to run into and out walking, right? That's perfect, that's good.
Yeah, okay. We'll go back. Okay, so some materials, and I think I've already spoken about this, the safety surface mounds, you see some pictures of that, we're doing a very light or so... We're doing a very light, uh, or so grill dog run fencing. We've used that many times in dog runs. It's it's light and open. It's not chain leak. It's much more decorative. Uh, the dog run itself is is going to be synthetic turf. It will be irrigated and flushed, you know, multiple times a day. Uh, and and there will be stations for, you know, the bags and to pick up after yourself. All of the concrete, and I think Gabby mentioned this, that there was distinctive pavement on the drive, all of the concrete within our site and in this, in this open space is is going to be an exposed aggregate concrete with a with a more distinctive scoring. Again, I I think I mentioned the seat walls. Some of those are concrete, either precast, but they're all free form and natural and they go with the slopes. Uh, next. And I guess the planting, uh, we will have, again, some honey locusts over here and some other shade trees. We are introducing a a whole level of flowering trees in there too, because we like, we like this open space to have a really fluid kind of organic, natural feel to it with some seasonal interest. We do have evergreens. We are screening the parking lot, not with a, an evergreen hedge, but with a series of evergreen plantings along that back edge. Uh, next. Uh, and the other story, um, again, a mixture of evergreen, native native materials, some grasses, um, some, you know, perennials and bulbs for seasonal interest, but a good mix of material, materiality for seasonal interest. Uh, next. So I think this is one of the most inviting views. So this is right as you come off where the plaza is, you can see the the gate to the dog run, the few steps up to elevation 11 from from nine, right? Or from seven, sorry. And then you see the entry sign. You'll start to see the curving walls built into niches, and you see a few dogs in the back. Uh, next, there's a view inside the dog run. Uh, and you can see, you can kind of see the grade change here because we're standing around elevation 11 and it's sloping down to elevation nine. And that seat wall slopes with it. And then you see the fence against the the property. Next, this is the last slide. So this is, this is at the corner. Uh, there'll be signage here as well. Uh, you can start to see, you can see right into the fluid space there, and you start to see the play mountains in the background. I think that's it.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um, believe it or not, the only question I have out of this, and I hate that I'm going to ask it because I'll never hear the end of it from Sito. Um, is there a separate section for small dogs versus large dogs in the dog park?
No. And and, look, I have.
We don't discriminate against dogs.
I I know, I know the situation. I used to have big dogs, I have small dogs. And and it's a, it's a big difference.
Huge difference.
Right? Um, there is not because it's not big enough, unfortunately, right? You know, typically when we do that, even in the urban spaces, they, each one wants to be at least 2,000 square feet.
Okay, understood. All right, thank you.
I'm running around that adventure thing.
So I I do have a question for you about the tree grates. Uh, we no longer allow tree grates as per our forestry standards, certainly since 2023, possibly going back to 2018. Um, so can we replace the tree grates with the tree, I mean, tree, tree, the, with the tree, oops, a border?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, can, can, those are, uh, I think they, it might have not been clear in the presentation, but I think the tree grates were in their plaza space.
In the plaza.
Okay. So not in the public driveway, okay.
Yeah, so I'm not sure if that changes the, that comment.
If we could just check on that, that would be great, just because that's for the overall health of the tree over time. Um, and then also when you, I think it's great that you've got a lot of native plants just, we also have a native plants ordinance, so just check that as well.
Yes, we have. And the one thing that, um, with the tree gates, you know, we, we can do structured soil underneath this too, right? Um, because, you know, we want these trees.
Yeah, I know.
Flowers as well.
You do just, um, our for, our city's forester is great. He works very well with planning, so just, I would just, if you can check on that.
And they'll be irrigated and, you know, you know, so, okay.
Yep.
I actually do have one more question. Um, the adventure area.
Mm-hmm.
Not for dogs, I know that. It's everything's.
The whole thing is.
Everything's for dogs. Um, what type of material is that? Is it heat resistant? If it's, you know, if that sits in the sun all day, does that get hot?
It it's a, it's a safety surface, which is heat resistant. I mean, it's typical for all playgrounds.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's made for play. Um, so if when you fall and having these adventures, you don't fall. But when you fall off that two foot mound and get hurt, you don't get hurt.
Okay.
What's the lifespan on it? What's the lifespan on that type of material?
Uh, well, you know, so it's interesting, right? So we we did a project in in San Francisco called Yorba Buena. We put them on these berms and and we were wondering, because we built this custom play equipment, and they run up and down all day long, we were wondering how long it would last, and it lasted about eight years before it started to wear out into the, to the tracks, right?
Okay. Anybody else? Anything? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Have a slice of pizza before you go back to New York, all right? It's better here.
I heard that. Where do I go?
Raza.
They might be closed by now.
2017, the New York Times said, for the best New York pizza, go to Jersey City.
Yes.
Last witness, Ms. Carolyn Wristel from Jersey Robin, our professional planner.
Okay, thank you, Council.
Hello. Good evening. I guess I'm still under.
Still under oath.
I'm still under oath. My license is still in good, in good standing. So I think we're going to start off with, um, our first, uh, we have a couple of bolt deviations and from the redevelopment plan, and there's a couple of variances, and we're going to sort of group them by type, uh, but I'll, I'll go through those. Um, so our first, uh, bolt deviation we're requesting is from the redevelopment plan, and that relates to the sidewalk. Um, so there is a requirement in the redevelopment plan that states that in the east district, we are required to provide a five foot sidewalk along the western lot line, so directly adjacent to the existing building and that's sort of interlot line. The intent was, of course, to provide pedestrian access from Montgomery to Christopher Columbus. Um, as we developed the site plans further, um, it was determined that it is too steep from essentially where, um, the access from, you know, east into the west district, it gets too steep. And essentially, the only way to provide a sidewalk there would be to provide stairs. Uh, the only other option other than stairs would have been to carve out more space within the public open space, which would have been in the west district. Uh, so right there on that aspect, we're already, it would require a deviation. Um, through discussions with city planning, it was determined that they really would prefer that we provide more active space, uh, less walkways and more of the active space, so a larger dog park, more space dedicated to, you know, the the play areas. So we'll essentially stop our sidewalk where the drive is. Um, so you can still, for the residents of, um, the existing building, they can still access and cross and 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 provide some access there. Um, so we we are requesting that deviation. Um, we are providing and still maintaining access, um, via alternative pathways, you know, the the existing sidewalks are still there. People can still access and walk around this entire site. So ADA access to, um, the open space, uh, all of those things are still maintained through that existing sidewalk condition. Um, so we we just felt that the design as is, it's a better planning alternative, uh, because it allowed for that increased landscaping and for the increased dog park size, uh, while still meeting the intent of the requirement, which was to make sure that ADA access was provided throughout the whole site. Um, our second, uh, deviation is for the minimum awning clearance. Um, so there's requirements in the redevelopment plan for, that would have loused an awning over the public plaza. Um, and the intent of this regulation, uh, the the requirement was that you had to have a minimum of the the 20 foot clearance. When we wrote, uh, and and developed the redevelopment plan, the intent, there, there was some discussion and intent of creating a very large awning that would have extended from the facade of the building and covered the entire plaza. That was one of the potential design items that that was being considered at that time. We're no longer proposing that. We are now proposing instead these smaller awnings that really function more as signage. They have a dual function of signage as well as to provide some shade and and protection for the pedestrian elements. Um, and they have a a vertical clearance of only 12 feet. Um, so we do believe that these, that the 12 feet does still provide, um, sufficient clearance, uh, for, uh, you know, uh, public access and and pedestrian access. Um, and we believe actually that this height is more appropriate, given the fact that these awnings are designed to function more as signage, um, so that overall, uh, the intent, uh, again, is still maintained, um, that we're providing sufficient clearance, but that the 12 feet height is more appropriate, given how these awnings are functioning versus how the intent of the ordinance, uh, the intent of the redevelopment plan was written. So moving on to signage, um, so we're requesting, uh, deviation for two signs. Um, originally, when we we submitted this application, I believed we had a couple more additional signs. We've eliminated some of our signs, uh, through our our more recent submissions. So we're really requesting variances now for two signs. Um, these are signs A2 and A3 located on the northeast and northwest corners of the building, and these are those vertical signs. Um, overall, these two, A2 and A3 exceed the maximum vertical, vertical dimension, uh, for signage, which was 30 inches. Um, and again, that's sort of due to the orientation. Uh, when we, the ordinance was, the intent was that you would have, you know, a horizontal sign with 30 inch letters. Um, the, these signs do have, their letters are minimum of the the maximum 30 inches, but instead of doing it as a horizontal, we've chosen to to put them vertically and go up the building. So overall, the sign themselves are still, you know, we we believe that they're proportional to the overall building facade, um, but we are just sort of reorienting how we're, how these signs are. Um, we also work, need a variance from the Jersey City Land Development Ordinance related to the signage. Um, the LDO stipulates, stipulates that no building identification signs can be located above the second floor. We, that's in the LDO. Um, the redevelopment plan does have some language that says signage above the ground floor shall be required, shall require site plan approval. So we are asking for the, uh, variance, uh, from the LDO for the vertical signage, uh, but the redevelopment plan does have language in there that states that this board has the right, um, to approve signs above the ground floor. Um, so overall, we believe that these two signs, um, are appropriate in scale and location for this building, um, that they create a very sort of distinctive, uh, design element to the facade and, uh, aid in neighbor, neighborhood, um, navigate, navigability, uh, for both vehicular wayfinding and pedestrian wayfinding. Um, so, you know, they've been integrated into the building design, um, and we think that overall, they they present a better planning alternative, um, and create a more distinctive look for this building.
Council, I'm, I'm just unclear. I understand the letters are 30 inch letters. Are we asking for seven letters on each facade?
I don't believe that we have finalized.
The name of the project?
The name of the project. Um, I believe that we have, we, we have like a certain square footage. Uh, so, so the way that ordinance was written, let me see, what's the exact language? We have a maximum square footage that we're allowed to provide, um, with no more than, so horizontally, you would have a, you know, you prescribe the box around the signage, you get a maximum square footage, and then within that maximum square footage, each letter couldn't be more than 30 inches. We're essentially taking that horizontal box and we're turning it vertical.
If I could, if this helps, um, we don't know how many letters there is, there are going to be for this, for the name of this building yet, but we'll stipulate that the, however many letters there are, they will not go beyond the top letter where the, where they're shown on this rendering.
That's acceptable.
Okay.
I'm sorry, my mic wasn't on. Yeah, that's acceptable.
Yeah.
I think so. Anybody else?
Is there, um, knowing that the, should be from the second floor? And I've been around where this conversation has come up, this question has come up before with signage above, especially in windows on the third floor. That's what the plan was trying to avoid. Why are we starting them on the bottom of the third floor? Um, I see that there's, um, I can understand the tree.
I I believe a lot of it has to do with visibility, that if they're, if they're lower than that, they're going to be obscured by the vegetation that's going to be proposed around this building. So by putting them higher, they become visible.
Because you're asking to, we're, we're saying nothing above the second floor, but you already started them.
Right.
Above the second.
Yeah, we are, we're starting above the second floor.
It's really more of a design concept, Commissioner. It's, it's, I think the architects and the team thought this would be a nice feature for the building, kind of the way some other projects around the city have, um, signage that kind of draws people to open space, really that concept.
Counsel, I think the only issuer difference being the fact that we're looking for a deviation, and we have to somehow categorize and define what that deviation is. I understand we don't know what the verbiage on the signage is going to be. I don't know if perhaps, you know, it's something that, uh, we're able to box out and clarify, or if maybe it's something.
Yeah, so I, we have a, we have a sign.
We'll get to a name. But if we have the dimensions.
I'm trying to think. We have. Oh, hold on. I'm looking at the wrong district. So on sheet G003 of this, the site plans submitted by our office, there is a signage type, there's a, a table. And within that, it includes, uh, the signs A2 and A3. And it includes the maximum square footage of 160 square feet for each of those signs. So that there is a maximum square footage that's assigned, that that would be, that would limit the size of those signs.
So however many letters, they wouldn't go beyond 160, it's linear feet, right?
Well, it's, it's square footage.
Square footage.
And the maximum, you know.
So if it's an anagram of signage, it'll be exactly the same. If there's more letters than signage, the letters will get smaller.
Or closer together.
Battery's running low.
But you hit, you, you, you raise a good point. I mean, so, you know, there's, I mean, so they, they, they chose the letters S I G N A J E, sign, so put it right in your face, signage. But if these are seven or eight, nine, 10 distinct letters, are they not symbols? You know, I mean, we'd have to kind of put it together. So we're getting around, I mean, to Santos' point, in terms of identifying it, if these are 30 inch letters.
Yep.
And they're, if each letter, but I, I get it's above the second floor, that the sign is prohibited, but is lettering not permitted?
The lettering is a max of 30 inches. Um, if, and the square footage is 160, if they choose to put a logo in there, I don't believe that what we're approving would stop them from doing that, but they'd have to fit it into the 160.
Well, we're talking about a building identifier.
You're saying?
Yeah, it's a building identification sign.
Technically, it's signage, but it's also a building identifier. So that would be where.
An aggregate of all the letters.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, because we break down different kinds of signs within the plan, right? So building identifier can be a total of 336 square feet. Yes?
Yes. No, that's what's proposed, yes.
That's the two signs.
It's three signs.
It's all three combined.
All three combined.
All three combined, okay.
Yeah, so the, the.
Yes, yes, you're right.
What is the, what is the max, though, I guess, is the question?
Yeah, it was...
Number and max on the identification, building identification.
I believe it was one per facade, and so we have three. Yeah, it was one per facade and a maximum of 5% of the ground floor area. And let me... Yeah, yeah, so it's, um... Let's see.
Yeah, that was another kind of difficulty in this, it's like on a chamfered edge.
Right.
So, it was also kind of unclear on how we do that, but...
I, I just, I like the scale, how it reads in the rendering. I think that's the appropriate scale and the size of the letters. I'd hate to see them...
But then they have to do a seven-letter name.
There are a lot of really great, seven-letter names, and there's an anagram. So, where you can put signage in and see what you come up with?
I think that they can do smaller letters, they just are limited to that max.
Chairman's concerned about the scaling of smaller letters?
I'm not that concerned. I'm not that concerned. I just, I just think that's, you know...
Spot on.
That's a good...
I like, I like, I'm going to agree with the chairman, I like the styling of it, but can we go back to that rendering? The only thing is, for me, what I was, for myself, is that above that top window, above the top garage layer, there's beautiful brickwork being done there. To put letters in between that brickwork would not look good. So, to not to, under any other circumstances, never go any higher than the window. If we're looking at the, the design, any lettering above that would, for me, I'm saying, would take away from that design of brickwork that the architect has done, and that, and I think that's a gorgeous design, so...
So, that we could stipulate, too.
Yeah, I agree.
And I hate to say it, but I agree wholeheartedly.
That's, that's fine.
I think the brickwork is gorgeous.
We could stipulate to that. And if it's 160 square feet, if it has seven letters or eight, can we, can we stip...
We could go down in the roof and just trim the tree. Trim the tree, trim. That's it.
I think what they're saying is that the letters either will get smaller, or the spaces between the letters will get closer.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. We're in agreement on the signage, then?
It's going to be fun reading that transcript, but yeah, I think so.
Okay, anything else?
Yeah, so there's a couple more, all right. So, we're going to move on to projections. So, this, these are variances. The Jersey City Land Development Ordinance permits a maximum projection of six inches for sills, leaders, and similar ornamental or structural features into any required yard or beyond front lot lines. So, as was described to you, there are planters that are going to be integrated into the building facade, and we're requesting a variance for the planters along Green Street only, because those planters would extend 11 inches into, over the lot line and into the public right-of-way. They're going to be... The other one we're requesting the projection variance for would be, again, for that continuous awning. So, that was integrated along the Montgomery and around to Green Street, and that would extend approximately six feet into the public right-of-way. So, both of these projections are very integral to the design of the building. They've been done to provide, you know, visual relief and interest to the building. The awning has been designed to sort of highlight that residential entrance to the building and sort of separate it from the commercial frontage that is on, you know, Columbus and from the other portions of the facade, which are more utility-focused. So, it really sort of highlights that corner. All of these projections, there is no interior floor space added by any of these projections. They all occur above that first floor, would have absolutely no impact on pedestrian access at grade. So, we really believe that these projections provide that visual benefit without substantial detriment to the public good. So, we would request the variance to allow those additional projections.
Rooftop, right?
Yeah, and our final...
A group of them?
Yeah, so there are three variances related to the, essentially to the rooftop. So, as this was described, we are requesting relief from the rooftop appurtenance height requirements. We are permitted 30 feet and we're proposing 37 feet 6 inches. We're requesting a rooftop set, rooftop appurtenance setback variance, where there is no setback for that sort of rooftop appurtenances along Christopher Columbus and Green Street. And we're also requesting a variance for the maximum rooftop coverage, where that sort of integrated bulkhead, mechanical bulkhead, as well as the other mechanical areas are going to, have a coverage of approximately 65% of the overall tower roof. All three of these variances, we believe, you know, there won't be a substantial detriment to the public good here. They are all integrated into the stepped, sort of ziggurat design that is sort of a feature of the design of this building. And they're all consistent with, there's language in the redevelopment plan that specifically talks about creating, that requires that rooftop mechanical equipment be screened with a material complementary with the facade of the structure and shall resemble an upper-level extension of the building and be designed to contribute to the building top design. So, we are requesting the relief from the redevelopment, from the city's zoning ordinance, but we do overall feel that, you know, there won't be a substantial detriment. The building itself is, you know, significant height. The additional height is only about 1.3% of the overall building height, and it really helps to contribute to the requirement in the redevelopment plan to create the sort of integrated screening and facade for the mechanical equipment. I think overall, all of the requested deviations and variances advance the purposes of the Land Use Law. You know, it's going to provide and guide the appropriate use and development of the property, consistent with purpose A, through the provision of a new mixed-use development in accordance with the redevelopment plan. And overall, we're providing and complying with all the community benefits required under that redevelopment plan, including that open space plaza in the East District, the open space with the dog park in the West District, the replacement parking for the senior citizens, housing that currently exists, and the Green Street dedication of the sidewalk along Green Street. The project is consistent with purpose B. It will help to secure from safety and flood and other natural man-made disasters. The new building will be consistent with current flood hazard requirements, with all the residential areas lifted above the base flood hazard, base flood elevation, as well as we're creating a lot more open space, which will help to mitigate some stormwater runoff from what is currently, right now, a parking lot. We're consistent with purpose C, the height and setbacks of the building. We're meeting all of the height, front yard, side yard, rear yard, setback requirements, coverage requirements. So, I believe this project will provide adequate light air and open space to adjacent properties, and it will promote a visual, desirable visual environment, consistent with purpose I, through the new green spaces that are going to be added on Christopher Columbus, the new sidewalks along both of those frontages, and really activating what is currently a fenced-in parking lot along the entire Christopher Columbus side of the block, as well as onto Green and part of Montgomery. So, I think this really will activate three sides of this block, which are currently pretty, pretty dead. I don't think that this will result in a substantial detriment to the general welfare. We are providing a conforming use, and we're providing over 15,000 square feet of new public open space that will be accessible to the wider community, and we're really sort of tearing down some of those walls that exist here and creating a more open and accessible frontage on three frontages of this block. And I believe that there's no result in a substantial impairment to the redevelopment plan, the zone plan or the zoning ordinance. We're providing the community benefits. We're consistent with the redevelopment plan objectives, underredeveloping underutilized parking, constructing mixed-use development with open spacers which activate the streetscape, providing mixed-income housing, creating new open space on Christopher Columbus Drive, and reducing auto dependency through development of residential near transit. So, I think overall, both the deviations and variances can be granted that they meet both the positive and negative criteria for this, for this project. So, that ends my testimony, unless anyone has questions.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Worstel. Anybody? Anything? Okay, thank you, we appreciate it. Counsel, I can't imagine there's anything else.
There's not.
Okay.
Unless you want to talk about signs some more?
Maybe. No, I think we can open it up for public now?
Sure, sure.
Okay, so, please, come on up. Let's open it up for a public comment. Anybody that wants to comment from the public, please come on up.
Yes. Catherine Moore, K-A-D-H-R-Y-N, M-O-O-R-E, 140 Bay Street.
Ms. Moore, good evening, we have three minutes for you.
Okay, just a couple, just a few little points, just to, just want to confirm that the trash will be picked up on and off-street, so it'll be like inside, and all move-in and move-outs will also be, you know, internally in the driveway inside the building, making sure that there's ADA access to the dog run, just to kind of be specific about that. I know there's a lot of stairs that are around there, but I think I saw, but I wasn't quite sure. Is there going to be any retail parking available for the, in the parking garage for any retail that is there? Any of the spaces will be devoted to, for the retail parking? And then, the lighting around the garage at night, how does that look? Because like right now, all the panels are dark. Is there any light that's going to be illuminating from the parking garage, especially adjacent to where the building is right up against the affordable housing that's already exists? So, what kind of light will be leaking out from that, just to kind of get an idea? And, well, they changed the address from 72 Montgomery to something else. Because I know like 151 Bay Street ended up having to change its number after the fact, so just kind of, you know, what will be the new number for that, so we can call it something else? Move-in, move-out, retail. Yeah, and hopefully, we might be able to have a sculpture opportunity within the open space, the green space. So, we'll talk with Exchange Place Alliance if they're going to have anything to do with any kind of additional sculpture along there. And one last question. As far as the signage, I know 25 Columbus or House 25, they still have signage on the side of their building as an awnings. So, you know, when you guys were talking about that, I don't know if that's something that's supposed to be coming off the side of that building.
As far as what, temporary signage?
I guess it's temporary, but it's still there.
Okay.
So, it's like their website and it's promotion stuff, but it's still there five years later. But I think the signage that will go alongside, if anything, it'll bring attention to the design of the brick, as opposed to detracting from it.
Sure.
So, I think that's probably a fine idea.
Okay.
But those were my questions.
Okay, we'll get them answered for you.
Thank you. Overall, looks great.
Just give us one sec, we're going to get those questions answered first.
I don't know if I can answer all those questions, but I can bring up some experts, I think, who can. As far as the trash removal and recycling goes, that's all going to be done on the internal driveway that's between the two projects, so none of that will be done on the public right-of-way.
Okay. And I think we covered move-ins, there...
Move-ins, the same thing.
Superior?
Yes.
I don't think anything was allocated for retail parking.
It's not required by the redevelopment plan. No, no spaces have been allocated for retail parking.
Chairman, we did not receive a comment from the tax assessor who would be assigning an address, but they would be later down the line.
Okay.
And that's nothing that we have control over?
No.
Yeah, we have no control over that.
And often don't know it.
ADA access to the dog run, is there any?
The ADA, the dog run is definitely ADA accessible, for sure, yes.
And can we address the light leakage from the garage at night?
I'm going to have the architect come up and address that.
Yes, directly across from the legal windows for battery view, there's actually a solid wall with green planted on it, so there is no visual connection between the garage and those windows.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you. Okay, anybody else from public? Please, come on up.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Yes. My name is Yang, last name is Zhang. My home address is 105 Green Street. Y-A-N-G.
Good evening, we have three minutes for you.
Thank you. So, I have some comments on the slides. Could you please turn to the page six? So, it looks like the drop-off area is just taking the public road, and I see there are, is there a bike lane or not? And, you know, this is a 600 units building, and also, I just heard there's no retail parking space. That means there will be a lot of drivers, Uber drivers, Dora Dash bikes, and plus, we will have many drop-off and pickup in front of, that's the Montgomery Street. Besides that, there is a bus lane coming from Exchange Place, going on the Montgomery Streets. So, that will be a really dangerous area when the building coming up, and you don't have any internal drop-off area to hold all the, all the residents' drop-off. I think that's, that's a, that will be a huge problem in the future for the traffic on the Montgomery Street. I don't know, have they ever thought about having a driveway inside the building, or don't take the public streets? That's my comment on the slide six. Also, I have another comment is about the traffic analysis I saw online. I don't know when did they do the traffic analysis. Have they ever thought about, there are two buildings coming up next to the Goldman Sachs, and that will break all the traffic pattern analysis, which will just invalidate all their assumptions on the traffic. Also, we have a Hoboken Station shut down, so there are more and more buses taking the passengers from Exchange Place, and that will also take the Green Streets and the Montgomery Streets. With that, I don't know in the future how the, how the pass station operate, but I think there will be more and more bus coming around that cross road, so it will also impact a lot on the traffic in that area. And also, I have the comment on the signage. I think in the application, they only mention about the two-dimensional, the square foot. They didn't mention anything about the weight, material, how, and how they mount those signage. I think there will be a hazard of them falling down and hit pedestrians. You know, Exchange Place is a really, really windy area in the winter, and I don't like any signage above the second floor. And also, for the dog run and open space, I want to know who will be the maintenance for those space in case of broken parts or to... for those space in case of broken parts, or to maintain the trees and vegetarians?
Okay, thank you, that was your agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, can we address a few of those issues?
Uh, sure, can you-
Unless you want me to call more public and we'll just get back to it?
I'm sorry, my mic is off. Do you want me to finish up public and we'll address everything?
Yeah, sure. Sure, yep, that would be a good idea.
I'm sure some, somebody's keeping track of the comments. I am. But from the team?
Yes.
I do. Okay, my name is Liling Gu, my home address is 105 Green Street. Liling, L-I-L-I-N-G, last name GU.
Good evening, we have three minutes for you.
Okay, yeah, so, since the, you know, we know about this project, I've collected a few comments from my, from my neighbors, and the, the most of them is about public infrastructure. Somebody mentioned that the school enrollment, enrollment at PS 16 is already kind of supercrowded, so the preschoolers are already being bussed elsewhere due to lack of space. And also, the exchange pass station is also supercrowded, and this will include, increase the flow a lot, and somebody mentioned the sewage system, and that's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else here from public that wants to comment? Anyone else? Okay, motion is made, and second, public is closed. Counsel, anything we can address?
Okay, so, as far, as far as, as far as sewage, the applicant is working with the Jersey City Municipal Utilities Authority, as they always do. They have open dialogue to make sure that all the wastewater treatment and, and storm sewer treatment complies with all DEP and local municipal regulations and JCMU, MUA regulations. And we will stipulate that that's ongoing, and we're going to comply with comments from those agencies. Gabby will address some of those other issues, I think, regarding traffic and, and the parking issue.
Yeah, I, I think just as I stated before, we are working with traffic and transportation regarding the, the drop-off zones, and, and, you know, what's shown on the plan now may not be the final design of that. The bike lanes will, will remain, they're, we're not intending to, you know, get, disturb the bike lanes. Traffic and transportation had, you know, suggested some hardening of the bike lanes, which we're open to, that, that's on the plan now, but again, we're working with them. So the, the final plan, you know, may look a little bit different than what's on, on the screen now, which is, you know, would be with support of traffic and transportation.
And Ms. Cornelli, just for the record, I, I do agree with your earlier testimony. I think I'd rather see the drop-off spaces there rather than parking. Drop, you know, in, in case of an emergency vehicle that has to get through there or something like that, a drop-off vehicle is more easily and quickly moved than a parked car. So I, I think that's the perfect spot for the drop-off. Okay, thank you, appreciate it. I do.
I can address the signs.
Sure.
Yes, the signs will be individually pin-mounted, and the connections will be designed and engineered by our structural engineer. They will not fall off.
Okay, when you say pin-mounted-
So there'd be several points, several points of mount, for probably four to six points of mount per letter, you know, and basically engineered to take whatever wind load that there is, as well as the gravity load imposed by the sign.
And I would assume that they're anchored to the concrete behind the brick and not-
They will almost certainly be, you know, be done that way.
Going with the pin comment.
Yeah, true.
Okay, thank you. Counsel?
I think that takes care of everything, unless, we, we did, just for the record, we did do a traffic evaluation, and it is posted on the portal.
Sure. Okay, thank you. Matt?
All the, that's a good, that was a good reminder, all the open space areas that we have shown you tonight, meaning the Open Space Plaza, which is in the East District, as well as the Open Space Plaza, which is in the West District, will be constructed, operated, managed, and maintained by the applicant as the owner of the building in the East District. And that will be memorialized via an easement between the applicant and the owner of the West District property. That will be memorialized by an easement that gives them the right to construct, maintain, operate, and manage that area in the West District for, to be publicly accessible open space. And the applicant will sign a development agreement with the City of Jersey City that will have some more specific maintenance requirements in it. Just those that are typically required of the City of Jersey City for this type of open space, because there is other publicly accessible privately operated open space in the city, and I'm familiar with the form of development, developer agreement that the city usually uses, and it's posted on the web portal as part of our application. Now, it still has to be approved by the city council, but there's a form of agreement there that covers the entire West District open space. The East District open space, which is the plaza, will be subject to the same developer's agreement, or if the city council prefers, a separate redevelopment agreement that just covers that area, whatever the council prefers. But the form of agreement, again, subject to the city approving it finally, is on the portal. And as far as the Open Space Plaza goes, the applicant has agreed to give the city a public access easement directly to the city, to that area.
Excellent, okay, thank you, counsel.
Okay.
Matt, do you want to wrap us up?
Sure, just along the same lines, there, there are several conditions that also kind of speak to that, or, and kind of bootstrap some of, of those agreements, whether they be the reciprocal easement agreement, the easement to the city, or the developers' agreements. This is, again, it's a subdivision application and a site plan. There's a separate staff memo prepared for both of these applications, and posted to the portal, both dated January 24, 2025. In addition, there's a JCMUA memo from December 20th, 2024, and a Division of Transportation Planning, Division of Traffic Engineering memo dated October 28th, 2024. There is not a memo from the Division of Engineering. So, the applicant has testified that they will comply with the JCMUA comments, and I assume the same for the Transportation Planning and Division of Traffic Engineering comments, but we're wary of signing on or complying blindly to any comments that might come at a later date from the Division of Engineering, which we understand. Regarding the testimony put on the record tonight, with respect to the, their professional planner, staff agrees with the reasoning to justify the, the granting of the variances. This application includes May components, affordable housing, replacement of senior parking spaces, open space areas and plazas that will be open to the general public. This is an application that came about from a new creation of redevelopment plan, and they are meeting the community benefits that are enumerated in that redevelopment plan. The staff conditions that are in the site, I'll just address, I'll go first for the subdivision. There are, there are actually four recommended conditions in the memo for the subdivision. Upon review with counsel, we are recommending that we remove the fourth condition, and recommend that the board entertain and make a motion for the subdivision. That includes the, the three, those three conditions, number one, two, and three. Moving on to the memo for and recommended conditions for the site plan, there are a lot. This is many moving parts, and I think the grand total we came up with is 19. Many of them might just be, you know, single sentences, but, and kind of go long, but we recommend that all of these move forward if the board makes a motion to approve this application. This is quite a attractive project for many reasons, not only for the immense amount of affordable housing, but all the other community benefits, and architecturally and design-wise as well. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Matt. Counsel, on the conditions?
Sure, so on the conditions on the subdivision application, conditions one through three, the applicant will agree to. And thanks the board and counsel and Mr. Ward for waiving condition four, we appreciate that very much. As far as the site plan conditions go, I've reviewed all 19 of them. Mr. Ward and I have worked very hard on getting that language in a manner that is acceptable to both parties, and on behalf of the applicant, I can agree to all 19 of those conditions.
Great. Okay, with that said, I'll entertain a motion. On the subdivision first, thank you, counsel.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P2024-0141 as presented to the board, together with staff recommendation and the revised conditions of three conditions only instead of four.
Second.
Okay, waive a motion, and second for approval of the subdivision.
Acting Vice Chair Gangadin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Prinzari?
Aye.
Commissioner Torres?
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai? I'm sorry, yeah, Commissioner.
Yeah, I like the presentation, it was-
Subdivision, subdivision.
Subdivision, we're on.
You do the project next, subdivision, dividing the property.
Beautiful, aye.
Commissioner Lipsky?
Aye.
Chairman Langston?
Aye for the subdivision.
Yeah, I, I do like the presenters and great presentation, and the color of the building was great, red and black up there, parking spaces 181, which I love it, and of course, affordable housing 90, which is a pasting, so I say aye.
We didn't make the motion as yet.
Yeah, we need a second on the motion? Do we call that the motion?
No, we didn't call the, we didn't call the case, no. All right, I'll, I'll make the- Chair, I'd like to make the motion to approve case P2024-0140 as presented to the board with staff recommendation and conditions.
Okay, we have a motion, and second with 19 staff conditions for the site plan.
The one and two that's doing separately, it's okay.
Acting Vice Chair Gangadin?
Yeah, very detailed presentation, great teamwork, I can see that. I'm excited to see this building as well. This will certainly enhance Jersey City skyline. Love the brick, big aye for me.
Councilwoman Prinzari?
Yeah, again, great presentation. I like that you all considered the open space on the exterior and in the public space and not regulating it to a rooftop, which we always appreciate, this always comes up in meetings that we have. Also, you know, Carolyn, great job in presenting both negative and positive criteria, and I love that you used ziggurat, that is so often regulated to ancient architecture, not modern architecture, so thank you for that. I vote aye.
Commissioner Torres?
I, um, would agree with Commissioner Lastin too with the drop-off instead of parking spots, if that could be worked out. I love the fact that you've incorporated the open space on the bottom part, and the best therapy for the senior citizens is to watch families playing in an open space, you know, when they sit down in their section over, and they can see that life, I know, it meant a lot to my father to see the kids and the family always playing. So, the whole job is gorgeous, and I already commented so much on the brickwork, so, I'm not going to cover again, but it's a nice job, and I will vote aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai?
Doc? No, you?
You are not voting?
When he calls me.
Sorry, I went out of order in the circle.
I vote aye.
Okay. Commissioner Lipsky?
Yeah, so the proposed building and the amenities are nice, but those signs, wow, I vote aye.
Chairman Langston?
So I just want to address it.
I'm sorry, I just want to address a few of the variances here. So the awning, I, I think the awning on the, the plaza, I like the smaller scale, I think it's a more inviting look. It doesn't overpower the plaza. I think the signage blends in well with the, the design of the brickwork. I think if it was in a different spot, it just, it wouldn't work. And, you know, I think all the variances we discussed here tonight, I don't think there's any detriment to the public good or the redevelopment plan. And just, you know, in layman's terms, it, it makes it a better project. Everything we saw tonight, every variance that came up, makes sense. Everything flows better with those variances in place. I definitely think it makes it a better project. The building itself, yes, absolutely, I think it's a great project. It's, it's a good look, it's a good design, it's functional. Mr. Parisi, hats off. The, the plaza, the, the open space, it's one of the most inviting open spaces I've seen in all my years on the board, and I, I love it. It's got, you know, elements that just draw you in, draws the eye in, I, I love the open space. So with that, it's an aye for me, and best of luck, thank you for coming down, everybody.
Motion carries all in favor.
All right, thank you. So let's move on with-
Thank you for your time, everybody, as always, appreciate it.
Chair, I have seven resolutions. Resolution of Planning Board for the City of Jersey City for approval and recommendation of amendments to Chapter 345 zoning. Resolution of Planning Board for the City of Jersey City approving a site plan extension of the preliminary and final major site plan approval with deviations and conditions. The applicant is Joe Paul G. LLC, DVSR Road LLC for approval of a one-year site plan extension of the previously approved preliminary and final major site plan with deviations and conditions. Property address is 248-250 Academy Street, Block 12204, Lots 1 and 30. Case number is P2024-0174.
Who is this one?
Resolution of Planning Board for the City of Jersey City approving an extension of final major site plan approval, applicant 362-364 Sixth Street LLC for extension of final major site plan approval, C. Variance 36463, Block 9803, Lots 8. Case number P024-0114. Resolution of the Planning Board for the City of Jersey City, applicant is Dix Sporting Goods Inc. for major site plan approval, Block 7303, Lots 2 and 325. Address is 50 Mall Drive West. Case number P024-0204. Resolution of the Planning Board for the City of Jersey City, applicant is Joan Bathia for final major site plan approval, 54 Cottage Street, Jersey City, New Jersey, 07306, Block 7902, Lot 58. Case number is P024-0034. Resolution of the Planning Board for the City of Jersey City, applicant Newark Avenue 721 LLC for final major site planning approval, 721 Newark Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey, 07306, Block 7902, Lot 15. Case number P023-0033. Resolution of the Planning Board for the City of Jersey City for approval and recommendation of amendments, correction to Chapter 345 zoning review fee.
Commissioner Gangadin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Prinzari?
Aye.
Commissioner Torres?
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky? Commissioner Dr. Desai? And Chairman Langston?
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor. Okay, thank you. Do we need executive session, Santao?
No. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded?
Second.
Okay, thank you, we're adjourned. Right?
But this is a special.